Good evening. My name is Cecilia Taylor. I'm the mayor of Menlo Park and welcome to the August 13 regular city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited to two minutes if there are more than ten speakers on an item. I would first like to introduce city council members and staff present. In chambers are myself, city council members Maria Dorr and Betsy Nash, council member Jen Woolison is absent. Staff present is city manager Justin Murphy, city attorney Nara Doarty, and city clerk Judy Heron. City clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Taylor and again echoing a welcome to our August 13 regular city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are participating virtually, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine at that time. If you're participating in person, we ask you to complete a speaker card at that back table and then return to me here at the clerk's desk. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our closed session. We will begin with this closed session item. City clerk Heron, can you please take public comment for closed session item C1?
Yes, thank you Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item C1, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation. Again, if you are participating virtually, now is the time to engage that hand feature, bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or cell phone, press star nine. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. So this will be the final call for public comment on our closed session item, C1. Alright, seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you Ms. Heron. The next item on our agenda is D, we will adjourn to closed session and we anticipate reconvening the meeting around 6:45 PM. Please check the screen for updates. Thank you.
All right, having our city council back at our in-person and virtual days. Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you. Good evening again. I am Cecilia Taylor, the mayor of Menlo Park, and I would like to recall to order the August thirteenth regular city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited to two minutes if there are more than ten speakers on an item. I would like to reintroduce city council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs is joining us virtually using provisions from the Brown Act. In chambers are myself, Cecilia Taylor, city council members Maria Dorr and Betsy Nash. Councilmember Jim Wilson is absent. Staff present include city manager Justin Murphy, city attorney Nerida Doherty, and city clerk Judy Aaron. Ms. Aaron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again echoing a welcome back to our August thirteenth regular city council meeting. For members of the public, we're here to speak on an item on tonight's agenda. After the mayor calls for comment on that item, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine, and if participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me at the clerk's desk. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Aaron. The next item is item G, report from closed session. I would like to introduce city attorney Nerida Doherty for our report out from August twelfth and our August thirteenth closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. There is no reportable action for either closed sessions.
Thank you, city attorney Doherty. The next item is item H, agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members. Does the city council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational items? Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, I wish to pull L three.
Thank you. City council member Nash or vice mayor Combs? Does the city council desire to modify any agenda items? The next item, item I, public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. In some instances, speaker time may be limited. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. Therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general direction. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for the following items: Presentations and proclamations, advisory body vacancies and appointments, consent calendar and study sessions, and our informational items. At this time, city clerk Aaron, will you please call for general public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, completing a speaker card at that back table, and returning to me at the clerk's desk. Okay, and in order to gauge the number of speakers, I'm going to do a final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Right, so we will have a total of six speakers. And our first speaker will be Greg Goodwin, followed by Kenneth Harris with donated time from Mona Harris.
Good evening, council. How do I make this brief? This is addressed to Mayor Taylor. We had a meeting with you and council member Nash. I think it was sometime in July. And Mayor Taylor, you requested a second meeting so that we can continue to resolve issues concerning Onetta Harris Community Center. Some things that you were concerned about. After the center was dedicated, we had continued to kind of ask you to meet with this, but you continued to say it wasn't important, you didn't want to meet with us. And it was kind of like a recurring defiance. And I don't think we deserve to be treated like that. You turned us down like a shirt collar, to be honest, and you had no reason to do that. What we were trying to do was get some things clarified that you requested. And we faced bureaucratic irrelevancies from you or the institutional process, whatever you want to call it. And it basically is uncalled for. This is a kind of a bureaucratic subjugation combined with that, with what was the decision that was made to make sure Onetta Harris's name wasn't on the building. And your constituents deserve better than that, just to be honest. And I have a lot more to say about it, but we just keep it, keep it brief. I just think that you can do better than what you're doing towards us. It's just not fair for you to show us that we're so meaningless to you. The Bellhaven community and the people in the community are just totally meaningless to you and the city council as a result of your representation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Kenneth Harris with donated time from Mona Harris, followed by Chester Paliso.
Good evening. Good evening, councilperson. I, I'm Kenneth Harris. I represent a group, we are Onetta Harris. And we are advocating for the spirit of the Onetta Harris Community Center to continue. The Onetta Harris Community Center should be, the name should be prominently displayed and promoted. In this day of eracism, in this day where blacks are being put at the back of the bus like Onetta, just pointing to a gym. And you've got four signs in the front. You've got a main sign with Bellhaven Community Campus, okay? And you've got three other signs that all say Onetta Harris. That, no, that all say, pardon me, that all say Bellhaven Community Campus, Kelly Park, Bellhaven Community Campus, Kelly Park, Bellhaven Community Campus in front, and gym. Bellhaven Community Campus in the front, and pool, rather, not the gym, but the pool. And why? I mean, why can't Onetta Harris's name be prominently displayed? Why are you relegating her to the back of the bus? It's not right, and it's not cool on any level. Onetta doesn't deserve this. I mean, she worked, she gave, she sacrificed. When you build a building such as the magnificent building that you built, and I commend you on that, on that achievement. I mean, it's a wonderful demonstration of modern technology and architectural construction. However, with that also comes the persons previously that were pillars in the community. Now, it's easy for gentrification to come in, prices will go up, I get all that. But we don't have to be erased in that process of gentrification. We don't have to be relegated to the back of the bus. How can you do that? It's not right, it's not cool, it's not fair, and it's unjust. I mean, it just should not happen. Onetta worked tirelessly for years, forty years. And for somebody to insinuate that all she did was pass out cheese, it was a forty-year mistake? Why? How could you do that? And how could your constituents come up and say, well, they just wanted a black person's name? Hey, what organization do you know that wants a black person's name? Especially in a city like Menlo Park? Come on, we have to get, everything that we get is hard, everything. And it shouldn't be, especially when we are trying to do the right, the good, the patriotic, the just thing that needs to be done for all humanity, for all of us. And that's what Onetta was about. She wasn't about just doing things to be doing them. She was doing them for the same reason I hope y'all are doing it for, in the goodness or for the righteousness of the community. And that's what she was about. And for you to just not put her name, pointing to a gym? You know, I went to college on a basketball scholarship out of Menlo, Atherton. And my mother, basketball? Come on, she was much more than that. She had eight kids, six of them finished college, six of us. She was totally in education from that community. And why are you just ignoring her? Why are you ignoring us? Why would you set a meeting? And then, we were there just to promote the legacy when, at the grand opening. I don't know what else happened, but we were there to promote the legacy. That's all we were there for. We weren't there trying to protest anything, we were just advocating for Onetta. There's one more thing I want to say. I want to talk about the picture. I have the, we have the picture, but we'd like to sit down with you. You know, you said you were going to meet with us. Why don't you just meet with us? We come in peace. You know, we're working in the spirit of Onetta Harris. We're not trying to intimidate, we're not. We're trying to do the right thing for the community. That's all, that's all we're trying to do. But Onetta deserves more. She deserves much more than you guys are willing to give. I don't, I don't get it. Why don't you just meet with us, sit down? What you can do, tell us what you can do, what you can't do. Tell us what you can do. But the conversation, for you to say that there's no need to talk. And I know you guys are probably upset for whatever reason, but we should always be able to talk, just talk. We were talking before, right? For years, how long we been involved with this? Four years? You had a breakout session with us, and at that breakout session, you said the name wasn't going to be changed. And it is changed. So I mean, come on, let's, let's, let's be civil and decent about this. Onetta Harris and her name and her spirit deserves to be recognized. That's it. And we're not going to give up. We're never going to give up. We can't do it. And we, we don't want to be adversarial with you. We really don't. Maybe you think we do, but we really don't want to be adversarial. We just want to work in the spirit of Onetta Harris and what she represented. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Up will be Chester Paliso, followed by Gail Wilkerson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Members of the council of the wonderful city of Menlo Park. My name is Chester Paliso, senior. I'm a former elected official. I used to represent there in community of Bellhaven and EPA East Palo Alto on the school board. I'm also here to support the continuation of the name for the Onetta Harris Community Center. I'm also here as a member of the consulting network for the Asian Pacific Islander voters. And they're very supportive of addressing and dealing directly with interest of the communities, not interest of individuals. And as well as I'm here representing the Veterans Network, associations that are also voters within the city of Menlo Park, supporting the holistic approach to address and deal directly with the needs of all diversified communities in the city of Menlo Park, not individuals. So therefore, wonderful members, I am here to respectfully ask you to reconsider and placing that item back on the agenda for reconsideration to continue the name of Onetta Harris Community Center as it was because she's a really great legacy and effective leader within our communities, East Menlo Park as well as East Palo Alto, co-habitating communities in one. Therefore, please reconsider that. Number two, you know, recently, there were statutes that they were taken down and school names been renamed because there were affiliations with all those individuals with slavery affiliations. Onetta Harris was helping lead the communities in East Palo Alto and East Menlo Park, habitating to develop families and children so they could become successful in life, not slavery implicating in our wonderful diversified communities. That's why, when I was talking to some of the voters, they're very supportive of continuing the name of Onetta Harris as the community center, not changes on any level. So please reconsider that, retaining thereby legacy in our leadership, in our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Gail Wilkerson, followed by Chester Prince.
Good evening, council.
Gail, can you move the microphone a little closer?
Can you hear me now?
Better, thank you.
I just want to reiterate what a couple of people said. Ms. Taylor, I thought it was me. It was you, wow. And now I feel better. My name is Gail Wilkerson. I'm currently running for a position on the city council of East Palo Alto. I grew up at thirteen fifty-one Henderson Avenue since nineteen fifty-five. I still, I'm still in this community. We consider Bellhaven as part of East Palo Alto community. And I remember Ms. Taylor saying, a lot of these people who want this don't even live in this area anymore. That's not true. Within a twenty-mile radius, or even if they're in Sacramento, it's an hour down, swoop down. But we're still here. Both areas are increasingly becoming gentrified. But it seems like the African-American contribution is being erased on both sides. And we have to be the watchers. We deserve to keep Onetta Harris's name on the center or the street that she lived on, terminal going straight into the center. We have to memorialize her some kind of way. But this is what you did instead. You opened up Willow Road, you got rid of all the shops, barber shops. There was all kinds of shops there, candy shops along Willow Road. East Palo Alto is still in this, we still have a voice. What you did was, you violated the Federal Aid Highway Act of nineteen fifty-six and twenty twenty-one. You installed and built a highway through a black community, black and brown community. And that was wrong, that's a violation. And when I'm elected, I'm going to look into it to see everything, did you dot your i's across your t's? Because I remember when it was done, I was a little girl. My parents was wondering what was going on. And I'm pretty sure that Menlo Park just did it and didn't consult hardly anyone and incorporated Bellhaven. My contention is, is that Bellhaven is still part of East Palo Alto. And likewise, on the other side, that Palo Alto took. But when I'm elected, I'm going to concentrate on closing off O'Brien leading to Kavanaugh and University Avenue. All you do, you're doing is giving us dust, dirt, and grime, and noise. And what you did when you took Onetta Harris's name off, that was the last straw. You're erasing us. I'm not going to, as long as I'm alive, it's not going to happen. And my last breath is going to be contacting the federal and the state to see if what you did was legal. So I advise you to put Onetta Harris's name on the center. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Our next speaker will be Chester Prince, followed by Eileen Lattimer.
My name is Chester Prince. I grew up across, on the other side of Willow Road, East Palo Alto. My earliest remembering of Onetta Harris Community Center was way back when it was just called Kelly Park. I think a lot of people don't understand the statue of Mrs. Harris in East Palo Alto and Menlo Park community. I was fortunate enough to have her to entertain one of my cousins that I, we had lost contact. And he happened to go to the same Santa Fe State with one of our sons. And she invited him in to her home. She was a community leader and person that just didn't talk. She put actions behind her words. To reduce her to just someone that gave out cheese is really an insult. It's an insult to her, and it's insult to the families that she was trying to serve. I understand, you know, that the community has changed. Because the community has changed in demographics. Doesn't mean that you erase the history of those that made that community. those that made that community what it is today. By taking the name off and relegating her to a gym when she was far more important than a basketball gym, it's an insult. I don't know how you could even begin to explain that type of slap in the face when you have had in this country. People, you got a president that was a slave owner and a rapist, Jefferson. And you guys hold him up as father of your country. It's time to cut out all that foolishness and really look at what people really can have, have contribute.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Eileen Latterman. Eileen, you should be able to unmute your mic at this time.
Thank you. Uh, dear members of City Council, I am here again to address the issues of the RV situation happening along Campbell and Scott Boulevard. Um, I've sent numerous letters and have not heard back, but this is a call to action for Gavin Newsom's, uh, new report. And I'm really disappointed to find out that this is not on tonight's agenda as this has been an ongoing issue. This, these RVs are causing health issues, uh, safety, life to our community here. We're seeing children in unhabitable areas. We've, we've witnessed, uh, so many sewage coming out of these RVs, almost near collisions, T-bones happening because the obstruction of views. We understand that there was approval for additional striping. However, uh, we need more. We need signage that says no parking over six feet. We need the sign, we need the striping to happen immediately because T-bones and accidents are happening as we speak because of the obstruction of views of these RVs. I hope that the city is considering, uh, reviewing and having a call to action of how to address these RV issues. We are exhausted to see children playing in dangerous areas. We're exhausted to see sewage smells in our community, in our business areas. We're just very disappointed in the lack of action from the city of Menlo Park. We understand that these unhoused will need to be displaced, but we, that's the city to really come up with an initiative to push that. Because what's happening now, city, business owners are having difficult times with people wanting to come to the office, when people want, feeling safe to walk around the neighborhood, but people not even wanting to leave their offices because of these RVs and the issues that they're causing. It's becoming unhabitable in this area. Uh, we're having issues with getting city permit because of new ordinance that come, but really it's devaluing us as business owners here along this Campbell and Scott Boulevard area. We're really hoping that the city comes to a conclusion. We understand that there's some movement that's happening, but we need more. It's becoming such a big problem and health and life and safety of all the community members here. And we're really hoping that with this new ordinance that the city has the authoritative matter to take matters into these own hand. I understand it's a, a big issue, but we, we need a call to action and we hope to see more action in the next following city council meetings because it is becoming a very unhabitable area, dangerous area for people to walk, to, to drive, to, to even go to the post office. So we, I really encourage that the city takes action on this following Newsom's order because right now they are breaking these orders without doing any action. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, that was our last speaker. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you to all of the public comment. The next item on our agenda is item J, Presentations and Proclamations. We have two presentations this evening. The first presentation is J1, Annual Finance and Audit Commission Report Out. I would like to introduce our Finance and Audit Commission Chair, Matt Normington.
All right, good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, uh, council members Nash and Dorr, members of city staff and residents. My name is Matt Normington. I'm the Chair of the Finance and Audit Commission for the city of Menlo Park. And I appreciate this opportunity to share with you our annual update. So the purpose of the, uh, commission, just as a recap, is to support city council in a comprehensive reporting and the status to the community at large. Uh, here you have a listing of our current members of the commission. We have a couple of new members, a couple others have turned out and dropped off the list, but overall, um, it's a great group, great group of residents. Everybody's extremely excited to be part of the, part of the team and work collaboratively on identifying, uh, solutions and working towards the goals that we've set out on, um, on our annual, annual list. Uh, again, just as a reminder, we have 13 goals that we're working on, uh, this, this year. Um, reviewing, uh, annual, the, the investment policy, uh, reviewing the audit, um, the process of the audit with the city's auditor, reviewing the quarterly performance of the city's investment portfolio, uh, reviewing the auditor's report. We are also reviewing the ACFR, uh, reviewing the city's pension and post-employment obligations, uh, identifying financial benchmarks, identifying alternative sources of revenue, uh, open govern, open gov transparency portal improvements, uh, encouraging and facilitating robust public comments and participation at commission meetings, uh, fostering public meeting environment that's inclusive, supporting filling of openings, and then lastly, researching opportunities to pay down successor agency debt. Um, items seven, eight, nine, and 13 currently have subcommittees assigned to them. Those are our current focus for the year. We've been spending a lot of time in those particular areas. Um, and then most recently, we spent a lot of time with, um, the new auditor that was appointed to walk through the, uh, the process of the audit and review those, um, the financial statements. Uh, here's our update on the activities that we've been working on over the last year or so, um, kind of from a business as usual perspective, updating the finance, the, the fact work plan, um, meeting, we, we meet with the city's investment advisor to review investment decisions and, and review the portfolio and really challenge certain, um, elements of that. And then we also reviewed the ACFR with city staff and auditor and the auditor. Um, some of the other areas that we're working on relate to reviewing grant funding opportunities. I understand there are some that the, that, um, that, uh, the, the city has already been uh, working on and there's others that are in process that have, I'm sorry, there are some that have been filed and there are some that are currently in process with city staff. Um, we have spent, as I mentioned, a lot of time with the new auditor to go through the process and ensure that the auditor's scope, uh, meets our city, uh, city goals. Uh, and then, um, we've also spent some time over the last couple of meetings to share , uh, subcommittee findings specifically related to open gov portal improvements and also the successor agency background research that we've been doing. Uh, looking forward, these are a, a couple of items that we're going to be focused on as we move forward in, into this current fiscal year. Um, continuing review of the investment portfolio performance, grant funding, um, and the ACFR. Uh, continue our subcommittee focus areas. There were those, those four committees that I had mentioned earlier. Uh, we do have two new commissioners that were appointed in April. We're very excited about that, so we're continuing the onboarding process with them. And then we will continue to support timely, clear and comprehensive financial reporting to foster the transparency and diligent stewardship of city finances as our overarching goal. Uh, and so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, the city council. Thank you again for this opportunity and I welcome any questions or comments.
Thank you much, so much, Chair, for your presentation and bringing it back to the dais to see if there are any clarifying questions before we go to public comment.
No, just gratitude for your work and for everyone on the team. Thank you.
Welcome and thanks. I should have said thank you to the city staff as well for their help with our committee.
Vice Mayor Combs, did you have any questions before we take public comment? Thank you. City Clerk Karen, can you take public comment on this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item J1, Presentation, Annual Finance and Audit Commission Report Out, participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on presentation item J1. No hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you so much, Mr. Normington, for your presentation on the Finance and Audit Committee's work. And I also appreciate your efforts in helping to fill the city's commissions as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, our next final presentation is item J2, Presentation on the Annual Library Commission Report Out. To introduce this item is our Chair, Carol Orton.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, and council members Dorr and Nash and city staff. Uh, I'm Carol Orton. I'm the current Chair of the Library Commission. Uh, and I'm here tonight to give you our report out on our activities, uh, related to the 2324 Library Commission Work Plan. I'd like to start by acknowledging and thanking the, um, other members of the Library Commission who supported and, uh, assisted with preparing this report, uh, Vice Chair Jennifer Wise and Commissioners, uh, Michael Herrick, David Pollak, Scott Schaefer, and Brian Westcott. So, go to the first slide. Whoops, I pressed too hard. There we go. So our 2324 goals, there are 10 of them, but I thought that rather than read those off to you, um, rather I would, uh, focus on where we really spent most of our time and energy over the last year. Um, so I'll move through. Hopefully I, I can, uh, I have too heavy a hand, but we interspersed some pictures and here I want to acknowledge, uh, Nick Shagda, who, um, supplied us with photos so that we could remind you and ourselves of the great connection we have with the community and particularly the kids in the community, uh, both branches, the Bellhaven Community Campus Branch and the main library. So, uh, well, we have interspersed those. Our first and primary goal, uh, under instruction from the city council was to provide, um, a forum, uh, for the public to express their thoughts on library services and library activities. Um, so we heard feedback from hundreds of commenters at multiple meetings of the Library Commission and several joint meetings with the Parks and Rec Commission, uh, relating to the naming of the Bellhaven Community Campus. Uh, this task took, took a substantial amount of mental energy and attention. Uh, it was the cause of some disappointment and disillusionment, um, in the process by community members and some commissioners, but hopefully, um, process lessons have been learned and we are now turning, uh, to focus our intention on other library services, uh, rather than the naming issues. So, uh, we'll move on, again, with a reminder of those who are benefiting from both campuses of the Menlo Park Library. Our second goal is to support the opening. So I've got three bullet points here, um, and would note the middle one first, that we did make a recommendation, um, based on all of the feedback we heard at public meetings. But really what our primary focus is for the facility was to, uh, review, advise, recommend programming and policies for this new multi-generational facility and to focus on making sure that it would operate in a manner that meets the needs of all the Bellhaven residents. Um, and we continue that work to monitor the ongoing operations now that this beautiful building is open. Um, we note that we're, uh, getting lots of feedback from library staff and, and those using the facility, that, um, the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. We have lots of users using the library for the first time, uh, which we're thrilled about, people asking questions, do I have to pay to get a book? Do I need a membership, uh, that I have to pay for? So, uh, we're heartened by that. And we're focusing on, um, additional library programs and services that are under development that hopefully will be, um, scheduled for implementation as soon as possible, hopefully later this summer through the fall. So of course we did focus on other things. Uh, we updated our work plan. Uh, we selected a new chair, me and Vice Chair Jennifer Wise. We reviewed a variety of departmental policies. Uh, we recommended, uh, updates to the strategic plan for 24 through 26. Uh, the childcare program is within the purview of the Library Commission, so we receive updates on the city-run childcare program and again, provide a monthly forum for those who wish to come and give us their feedback. Uh, and now, um, we continue to work on onboarding new commissioners. Uh, we currently have six commissioners. Two of us have been serving for just over a year. Uh, Jennifer Wise and I joined, were appointed about a year ago in May of 23. The remaining four commissioners who are now sitting on the commission are all new within the last couple months. And as I understand it, you'll be hopefully appointing one more to this evening. Uh, so we're excited about that. Um, we're, uh, looking forward to working together. There's a lot of energy and enthusiasm, um, for those now on the commission. Um, we are looking forward to collaborating and coordinating with the Parks and Rec Commission. Uh, I know they've also have some, uh, openings to be filled and a, and a chair and vice chair to be selected. So we've, um, set our December meeting to do jointly with them and I'm looking forward to trying to collaborate and coordinate with their chair when they choose one. Love this picture. Want to make sure you see Nick Shagda there? Uh, so now, um, we're working on our 2425 work plan. We, our next meeting is this coming Monday, the 19th, where we'll be focusing on that. Our hope is that we can, uh, take a closer look at what library services throughout Menlo Park should look like as we go into the future now that we've completed this one big project and are, uh, shepherding it along. We also want to look further and, and plan for, uh, what, what's a library of the future look like for Menlo Park and what would best meet the needs of our residents. Um, and that revised work plan is set to be, uh, before you for approval at your September 24th meeting. So I'm hoping that if you have any feedback or guidance for us as we finalize that work plan next week, um, you can, uh, provide it to us. But I'd like to thank you for your support. Uh, we're all very, very excited and enthusiastic about serving on this commission and we look forward to, um, providing excellent library services, supporting those who do so, uh, in our work in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation, Chair Orton. And I just want to just give a special thank you to you and the Library Commission. Um, we appreciate your service and also to the staff liaison for the work that you've done with the commissioners. Um, the work I, I just, um, I'm, I'm encouraged. So I appreciate your enthusiasm and your energy and, and what you bring to the city. Um, and at this time, are there any comments from other council members before we take public comment? City Clerk Karen, will you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item J2, Presentation, Annual Library Commission Report Out, participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on item J2. This will be the final call for public comment on item J2. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, just wanted to check in with councilmembers and also with Vice Mayor Combs to see if you wanted to provide any feedback for the presentation.
Just gratitude yet again. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is item K, Advisory Body Vacancies and Appointments. At this time, we will consider applicants and make appointments to fill vacancies on our various advisory bodies. Here to introduce this item is our City Clerk, Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So yes, the item before the City Council is to consider applicants and make appointments to fill unexpired vacancies on a couple different advisory bodies. We currently have five vacancies, one on our Housing Commission, one on our Library Commission, and three on our Park and Recreation Commission. And again, we're asking the City Council to consider the applications received. Quick overview. We did a five-week recruitment, resulted in 10 applicants and 16 applications, given that some of the applicants applied to multiple different vacancies. Tonight, for voting, we will be using roll call voting by commonly used first name. And I will ask each City Council member for their nomination. The person receiving the most votes will then be appointed. If we resulted in a tie vote, there'll be a second round of voting between the tied applicants. As for the order in which we do the appointments, the City Council has the option of doing it by the number of applicants, suggested most to least, which would be Parks and Rec, followed by Library, and then Housing Commission. We could also do it alphabetically, Housing Commission, Library Commission, Park and Rec. Or if the City Council has a preferred order of appointment, we can do that. For the Park and Recreation Commission, there are three different expiring terms, April of 2025, '26, and '27. So the City Council can choose to appoint applicants to each term individually, or the City Council can direct the City Clerk to randomly assign terms, and the City Council can just appoint three persons to those three vacancies. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions or open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And are there any clarifying questions from City Councilmembers before we go to public comment? City Clerk Karen, please take public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item K1, Consider applicants and make appointments to fill vacancies on various advisory bodies. If you are participating virtually, engage in that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, completing a speaker card at that back table and returning to me at the clerk's desk. Okay, currently have one speaker. So this will be the final call for public comment on item K1. Okay. So our speaker will be Kim Crockett. Feel free to step up to the podium. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I don't have prepared remarks, but I just wanted to introduce myself. I... Can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Kim Crockett, and I applied for the Library Commission vacancy. And I'm very excited to do a lot of the work that Carol Orton just described. I'm excited for the library of the future. I want to help be a part of building community through our library system and through the wonderful resources that we have in the city. And I just wanted to introduce myself. And I feel like I have a background in years of volunteer work as well as in our schools and running nonprofits in Menlo Park and East Palo Alto that I... A lot of work that I could bring to listening to our community members and identifying needs and creating actionable recommendations for our libraries. And so I'm excited for this work, and I really feel like it's going to be great for our city. And so I'm very grateful for the opportunity. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. That concludes our public comments. Mayor Taylor, I will return to you.
Thank you, and thank you for the introduction. At this time, Ms. Heron, I believe we can do the appointments, the Housing Commission, Library Commission, then the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you. Let me bring up our tally screen. And so for the City Council at this moment is our one unexpired vacancy to the Housing Commission, expiring April 30th of 2025. We received four applications for this one vacancy. And I will proceed with roll call voting by commonly used first names. And again, just asking for your one nomination. Yes. Councilmember Dorr?
Oh, can I make a... Can we make comments before the voting? On the dais? Just as a note, I know that only one person spoke and gave a comment, but I believe someone who applied to this Housing Commission is in the room. And I just want to make sure that folks know that there are other candidates in the room for other positions, for other commissions. I believe, Hadrian, you're in the audience here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, City Councilmember Dorr. So yes, if there's any of our applicants here, if you want to just raise your hand so they can see you, that's fabulous. We appreciate you. Would you mind saying your names?
The podium, that would be great. Thank you, Councilmember Dorr.
Justin Van Buren.
Don Ems, I've actually applied for the Library Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you.
Adrian Tremont for the Housing Commission and Parks and Rec.
Thank you all for being here and for applying. Ms. Heron?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. And thank you again to our applicants who were able to attend. And actually, it looks like we did have two hands raised, and I do believe they're applicants. So I'll go ahead and allow them to unmute and introduce themselves. Kevin Dawkins?
Hi, Kevin Dawkins. Sorry, couldn't be there in person. My wife and two-month-old have COVID, and so I had to stay home to help them. But I'm very excited to be here. Thank you for the consideration. I'm applying for Housing and Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, and Edward Kay?
Yes, hello, everyone. Edward Kay applying for the Parks and Recreation Commission online. Good to meet everyone.
Thank you so much, Edward. All right, so if there's anyone else online who's an applicant who just wants to introduce themselves, feel free to raise that hand feature or press star nine if you're calling in. Okay. Well, thank you again to everyone who was able to join. I'm going to return it to the appointments for our Housing Commission. Again, one term, we have four applicants, and we will do roll call. And again, asking each City Councilmember to provide one name for nomination. And the person who receives the most votes will be appointed. So with that, I'll start with City Councilmember Nash.
Christopher Maxi.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs.
Adrian Tremont.
Thank you. Next is City Councilmember Dorr. Adrian Tremont. Thank you. And Mayor Taylor?
Adrian Tremont.
Thank you. Okay, so with three votes, congratulations, Adrian Tremont, appointment to the Housing Commission. You'll be hearing from me soon, probably tomorrow.
Congratulations.
All right, so moving along to our Library Commission. Again, we have one unexpired term through April of 2026. We have four applicants. Same process as we just did. I'll look to City Councilmember Nash.
Kim Crockett.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs.
Kim Crockett.
Thank you. City Councilmember Dorr.
Kim Crockett. And I'll say, I was grateful that Kim stopped by my open office hours to chat a little bit more about her interests. And other commissioners, either folks who are in the candidacy now or interested in applying into the future, would welcome folks to come talk to current councilmembers about what it's like to serve and to other commissioners, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Taylor?
Kim Crockett.
Thank you. So with four votes, congratulations, Kim Crockett. You'll also be hearing from me tomorrow.
Congratulations.
All right, let me bring up our Park and Rec, but let me update it.
May I make a comment on this one? Yes. There are so many great applicants here. And one thing that was challenging for me as I went through this is, for example, there was one application that clearly had copied and pasted from ChatGPT with the prompt still in the line. And this is not the first, this is the second time I've seen this in an application. In this round, at least, this is the first, this is the only one in this round. But I just encourage folks that if you're using these new tools to be really thoughtful and make sure your answer is what you want it to be and that you're still putting your own work into it, because we notice these things, we can kind of catch up on the addiction that is used. And what we're looking for on the dais, what I'm looking for is that folks are putting their own time and care into this, that they will also then show up, just show up on the commissions with similar care. So thank you.
Thank you, City Councilmember Dorr. All right, so the first question will be, does the City Council wish to appoint individually to each term? Or appointing three persons and then randomly selecting the term length for each appointee?
Ms. Heron, it would be great if you make a recommendation.
In our current past practices, I've generally done a random draw. It's done through a very fun spinning wheel at my desk after the meeting.
That's perfect.
I do look forward to it, so thank you. Okay, so with that, we will go ahead, and I will ask each City Councilmember for three names for nominations. And then I will go back and make those randomly selected terms and notify each of the applicants tomorrow which term they were selected for. So with that, again, starting with City Councilmember Nash, can I have your three nominees?
Justin Van Buren, Don Ems, and Kevin Dawkins.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Meet Edward Kay, Justin Van Buren, and Kevin Dawkins.
Thank you. Next is City Councilmember Dorr. Can I do Don Ems? Justin Van Buren, and Kevin Dawkins. Thank you. And Mayor Taylor?
Thank you. Justin Van Buren, Don Ems, and Kevin Dawkins.
Thank you. And so with four votes, we have Justin Van Buren and Kevin Dawkins. And with three votes, Don Ems. Those will be our three appointees to the Park and Recreation Commission. So congratulations.
Congratulations to everyone, and looking forward to the draw and the spin of the wheel.
I'll be recording it, so if anyone's interested, I'll have it.
Nash, oops, Vice Mayor Combs, go ahead.
No, the Councilmember Nash can go ahead. I'll go after her.
Actually, I think we're going to say the same thing, so please go ahead.
I'm not sure. No, we're not. But so I'm going to let you say, I'll go first, and then you can say what you're going to say. But we're going to say something different. I was going to ask, like, does the council actually have a stance on people using some sort of AI assistant to write out responses to this application? Is that what you were going to say, Councilmember Nash? Because that's not what I thought.
No, not at all.
Okay, totally cool. Again, this isn't like a test in college. But, and I wouldn't, you know, wanted to make it some rule, but we could think of adding some sort of guidance or language in the application, saying something to the fact that it's not ideal or we actually, for, you know, technologies that write responses for you to be used or that we want to hear directly from you or from the applicants in response to the questions. Again, I think, because I share, Councilmember Dorr's concern, if we might want to, you know, provide some additional language in the application.
I would be amenable to having language that says, a line that says, "We encourage folks to write this themselves rather than relying on external things." But I don't have words in mind.
So I wanted to thank the many new applicants who we saw this round and encourage everyone to apply again. What I thought Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Combs was going to say is something that he says, and I say often, is both of us were commissioners prior to becoming councilmembers, and neither of us made it on to the commission the first round. And so it's something where serving on a commission is very, very interesting, fulfilling work. And I strongly recommend you do apply again. Also, as Councilmember Dorr said, it is very beneficial for people to reach out to councilmembers, to commissioners, and to introduce yourself, even if it's just an email. It's very helpful to see, just get another point of contact and have you express your interest to us. So thank you so much for all the new people who are getting involved in the city, both who were selected, appointed to the commission, and also who have applied and hopefully will apply again next time. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, for sharing that with the public. And also thank everyone who applied for the commissions and those of you who are now a commissioner. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Consent Calendar, item L. Under the Consent Calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a City Councilmember, City staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on the Consent Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public would like to provide comment on our Consent Calendar items, L1, City Council Meeting Minutes, L2, Receive and File the Investment Portfolio, L3, Resolution Adoption for the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Investment Policy, and L4, City Council Policies Procedures Manual Update. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. If you are participating... If you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. I see currently one hand raised. This will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, L1 through L4. All right, so we have two speakers. Our first speaker is listed as SMCYA, followed by John McKenna. And if you could, let us know which item you are speaking on.
Yeah, um, I would be speaking, sorry, my name is Jaden Wong, and I'm a student uh, in San Mateo County, high school student, uh, rising senior. Uh, and I would be speaking on L3, which would be adopting a resolution improving fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five investment policy for the city, um, and and so on. It's an extended title. Uh, but I would like to comment on, uh, I think the addition of improved language to uh, this investment policy, which uh, I think uh, focuses more so in a priority towards uh, environment. I don't have the exact language in front of me, but I believe that the County of San Mateo has put in their investment policy, a commitment to uh, not necessarily disinvestment, but preventing investments from fossil fuels, guns, uh, and other more so uh, dubious investments, right? I believe that this kind of language, uh, which is included in the county's investment policy, uh, could be added to Menlo Park's uh, investment policy for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, just because I think it would be a proactive move in uh, being able to ensure that the council is I guess, held a a bit more accountable, you know, kind of proactive, like I mentioned, uh, to these issues and opportunities that I think could greatly benefit the public. Um, yeah, I'm not sure if uh, any of the councilmembers are aware of the language in the County of San Mateo's uh, investment policy, but I think I'll probably send a follow-up email, just because I don't have it with me right now, but I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and our next speaker will be John McKenna. And John, if you could also let us know which item you're speaking on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, yep. I don't have a prepared statement. I'll be very brief. I am speaking on L3 as well. I just wanted to uh, support what uh, Jaden and Anjali have stated and written to the city. Both are tremendous youth leaders in our region. And I really can't say it any better than uh, Anjali did in her letter to the city. So I fully support um, everything that she wrote and that Jaden spoke about, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And that does conclude our speakers. So Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you to everyone that provided public comment. Um, at this time, I'll take a motion um, to approve items L1, L2, and L4. Um, Councilmember Dower asked that we pull item L3 for discussion. I will move to um, approve L1, L2, and L4.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash and a second by City Councilmember Dower to approve the consent calendar, except item L3. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Woolison absent. Thank you. Councilmember Dower?
Thank you, and I want to express my thanks to Anjali Mishra and to also Jaden, who just called in, and the others who have written to us um, about our investment policies. Um, if folks haven't seen the email, uh, Anjali sent a a council, an email to the council and to the staff saying, what about the investment policy? Here are other cities that are making changes. And she helpfully cited that uh, two cities and a county have all developed uh, an environmental, social, and governance kind of framework principles into the investment policies they make um, to ensure that everything that the city is investing in are things that we as people, uh, we as a community would also want to invest in. Um, so things like ensuring that we aren't investing in fossil fuel companies or firearm manufacturers or tobacco companies. And they're helpful models that have been created at the San, City of San Mateo, the City of Palo Alto, and the County of San Mateo. And um, it was just really helpful to read through these, and it it sparked my interest of is this an opportunity for us to to develop our own investment principles or strategy around um, thinking about ESG? And um, first, before we dive into potential language options for what that might look like, um, I was wondering if I could ask some questions of of staff um, to help frame it up for for us on the dais about um, about the city's current investment policies. Um, we just approved and on the consent calendar, the investment report, which does include ESG uh, reporting of of some sort. Could you explain a little bit more about? We do that, but it, we don't seem to have an ESG policy or or principles in in our investment policy.
Yes, thank you for the question. Administrative Services Director Brittany Mello, and I have Assistant Director Jared Hanson here to answer your questions this evening. Uh, so in about late twenty twenty one, early twenty twenty two, um, we started to work with our investment advisory firm, Insight Investment, to start reporting on the environmental, social, and governance ratings. So they have a proprietary tool that takes in data and indices from other sources and comes out with the ESG rating for um, each investment. And so we started including that. Um, I believe there may have been some council support um, at some point to um, and to see that kind of information, but it is um, as of yet silent in the policy itself.
Thank you. And I'm curious, is there a way uh, through through language to ensure, because it seems like first and foremost, the city is trying to ensure for the safety, liquidity, and yield of the investment portfolio? Is there a way to hold that true and also um, have a a written policy on environment, social, and and governance principles?
Yes, absolutely. If the council were to direct us to amend the policy to include some language related to um, ESG, we certainly could bring that back to the council.
Great. And um, other considerations that would would help shape, you know, the 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 benefit or um, just how easy this is to do. Um, I I saw in some of the other examples of of from City Palo Alto, for example, they say that it does not require any divestment of existing investments, but it's just considered on all new investments. Is that a framework that would also possibly work in our situation?
Uh, yes, and we and we would agree with with that approach of not divesting from current investments, so waiting until uh, an investment reached maturity to avoid any loss um, on return in the in the city's finances. Um, but so when the new item would be um, looking to be purchased and weighed against other like investments, an ESG rating could be another factor. Um, if all things are equal, to choose the investment that has the higher or more beneficial ESG rating.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I I took my own crack, given that we have these three models that Anjali shared in her email uh, with the direct language uh, to to write something that could be a starting place for the city to explore. And I gave that to our our city clerk, and I'm wondering if you could present that on the screen just for so folks could see. And I'll just give everyone a a minute to to read that. Thank you. And um, I'm, yeah, I'm I'm curious if you have any other uh, feedback or input that would be helpful for us to think about as uh, we have a conversation on the dais about this.
Um, certainly. Uh, so I think this language could be incorporated in into the investment policy. Um, there might be some words that we would recommend tweaking. Um, I I appreciated in the, of the comment that was submitted, um, some of the language that was being used by the City of Palo Alto, um, so we could potentially help craft that language, but we're we're open to whatever direction the city council provides.
Great, thank you. That's all. I'd love to have a conversation on the dais. Um, and to explore if if this sounds like a a direction we could move. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dower. Councilmember Nash or Vice Mayor Combs, do you have any feedback on this item? On the suggestions from Councilmember Dower? Sure. So I am supportive of this. I would like to um, have staff take a crack at the language and make sure that they're, um, that it's fine tuned, but um, I'm definitely supportive of this addition.
Uh, um, so I'm supportive of um, staff reviewing this and coming back um, uh, with um, slightly tweaked language and providing some analysis of the impacts um, that um, a a policy, our direction of this nature would would ha- possibly have. Um, I mean, the the language overall sounds fine. Of course, there is specifically the prohibition. Um, uh, as it relates to, you know, companies that derive it, um, some portion, a significant portion of their revenues from tobacco, fossil fuels, firearms, and and weapons not used in in national defense. And so, yeah, it'd be be interesting to understand staff's um, position on that language and what the impact would be. I I do, we'll say, like, why I'm supportive of this coming back with a specific proposal from staff and having discussion. I I do wonder if, to some degree, it seems disingenuous as it replace, or or relates specifically to like fossil fuels. Um, the city is not divesting itself of the usage of fossil fuels um, as it relates to its operations. Um, and and so it it would seems as though, like, from my perspective, like, like some sort of commitment on those levels, um, cer- certainly would have uh, you you know, be likely more consequential, but would um, would, I I think for me, carry more weight than than a statement um, as it relates to our investment policy. Um, and so that that would be my, you you know, my my only concern is to, you know, what, you know, what what are we to doing here? Like, right? Um, is it something that makes us feel good? Um, or or is it something that where we're really taking a significant stance about something in the world we uh, would like to change? And like I said, saying that the city would divest itself of the usage of fossil fuels would certainly, to me, be a much more powerful statement. But again, um, uh, obviously challenging, if not impossible to im- implement.
I think we can do both, in that we don't have to choose. If we do this, it doesn't, um, we could do this as a first step as we are trying to um, move the city away from fossil fuels. Uh, I'll stop there.
I would also say as someone who's involved in campaigns like this on my university campus and the not-too-distant past, um, we, it's important to put our money where our mouth is, and this is an important way that, in one way that we can do that, and I agree with you that there are other things that we can and maybe shouldn't the future do, uh, but this is an important step on that route.
I think, again, like I say, it's quite a, um, in all of those instances that you've been involved with have those entities or organizations actually said that we are going to make a statement to not use fossil fuels in the operating of our organization. Like, right, that we're gonna actually make that that commitment. Like, has the university actually said and implemented that? Like, right, and so I I don't know that that's happened. I'm I'm open to any suggestions, or even the county and, or you you know, the ci- city of Palo Alto, tho- those examples. Um, I I think, again, like I say, supportive of the additional discussion and the impacts, but I I also like um, i- if there was that other element of 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 this, then to me, that would be a lot more powerful, and then you 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 would have a real a a real discussion, like, right, about those trade-offs and what changes to um, the services um, that people have come to expect, are they willy, willing to sacrifice?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs, Councilmember Nash, and Councilmember Dower. Um, and I appreciate um, the discussion that we are having, and I am I am supportive of the staff looking at the updating our investment policy um, with your eyes on it first, um, to give some recommendations to city council. Thank you. And so, Ms. Heron, in the motion to approve L3, um, what's necessary?
I may defer to staff if we can approve with this direction, um, and then just return the ESG language and impacts? Or should we return the entirety of the item with this section included?
I think we should return the entirety of the item with the proposed language for the council to review before adoption.
So then the recommendation would be no action on item L3, and staff will take the direction provided by the city council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item M1. Our study sessions. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action item, will not take action on the items addressed in the study session. The city council may provide direction to staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the city council for actions. Our first study session is on community funding program, and here to introduce this item is our assistant to the city manager and city clerk Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So the item before the city council is to review the community funding grant program and provide direction on updates to the program and funding. The community funding program was enacted in nineteen ninety-six, and the policy provides guidelines on the program goals, eligibility for nonprofit agencies, and the application procedure. Eligible programs must address verified community needs and have a significant Memo Park client base. Per the policy, the program must respond to a verified community need as defined by the city council, which are prioritizing people with disabilities, emergency assistance, and low-income support, seniors, and youth. Staff meets shortly after all applications are received to review and discuss applications and create recommendations to bring to the city council subcommittee. The rating is based on three categories: completeness of application, project meets City of Menlo Park goals and eligibility requirements, and impact of proposed project. The percentage of client base in Menlo Park is also taken into consideration, as well as the impact to Menlo Park residents and the size of the nonprofit. For the timeline of this program, in August of Sept- and September, the application marketing begins. In October, app- applications are due, and internal staff committee reviews applications and provides recommendations. In November, the city council subcommittee meets to prepare the the recommendations. In January, the city council allocates funding, and the city begins the process of dispersing grant awards. By July 31 of each year, the annual reports are due from the award recipients that detail the use of the funds for that fiscal year. Also, applicants must maintain accounting records with an independent audit at least once every two years. The city's program requirements have remained in place for the past 28 years. This list of adjustments are for city council consideration. And again, staff is seeking direction and updates to the policy and the process, the program, and the funding. With that concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any clarifying questions or open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, for the presentation. And at this time, are there any clarifying questions from city council members? Councilmember Nash?
Could you please put back the very last slide that you had with all of the questions that you wanted us to consider, and just leave that up there for a few minutes as we have public comment?
Definitely.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from city council members before we take public comment? Ms. Heron, can you please take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our study session item M1, community funding program, you are participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. You are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. I currently have one speaker card in one hand, so this will be the final call for public comment on study session item M1. Right, so we've got our two speakers. I will start with Lynn Branlet, followed by Juanita Croft.
Good evening, council. First, I can't read what's up there. And if we could have the print bigger for these meetings, I've just come back from San Diego today, so I can't comment on that. But I do want to say, I think it's great that you're reviewing the program, and I've been following it for two years. And I also happen to have received a grant on behalf of a small one, a program that I'm involved with. But I definitely think it should be reviewed. And it was coincidentally on a list of recommendations for further discussion at our last Finance and Audit Commission meeting. So, I'm a commissioner, and you have a very gung-ho group of people who do want to work on tasks where on subcommittees. Part of our challenge is, we meet every three months usually, and so it's been difficult to make progress. But my counterpart and I, Jeff LaRue, we are on the New Sources of Revenue Subcommittee, and I took the aspect of, how could we possibly save staff time or money? Because time is money. And this particular item was on a list of possible items that we could look into, not contacting the agencies or anything like that, working with staff, but kind of a review, do a comparative study, et cetera. So, I was a little surprised to see it come forward, but I just want you to know that resource exists where, I think, I'm very impressed with the composition, just speaking about the other people. We want to work, we want to help. And as a follow-up, we were directed to meet them with staff to talk about how this could possibly be a work plan item. I'll go ahead and do that. I've been doing a bit of traveling. But we are a resource for you, and we want to help here in other possible ways, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speaker will be Juanita Croft.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, and city council, and city staff. I'm Juanita Croft. I am with the, I am a long-term resident here in Menlo Park, specifically in the Bellhaven community, where much of these programs are needed for support by our residents here. The Bellhaven Community Development Fund, since its early days, has been one of the groups responsible for the mini-grant program that the city offers for residents in Bellhaven, a subsidy program for curb appeal and safety. Over the years, I have continued to follow the community grants and the agencies that are usually requesting funding. And as I looked in terms of implementation within our community, I found that generally, residents are not familiar with these agencies and so forth, and that is primarily due to very little outreach. And so, one of the things that the Community Fund, Development Fund is working on is a project to provide more information to our Bellhaven residents about the different nonprofits that are serving our community. So, if, as you're reviewing the policies around this and the need for it, I would also suggest that some consideration be made for outreach and information sharing with the people who need it most, because they don't use the usual technologies, and our mail in our area isn't always that good. And so, I hope that we can continue to support the nonprofits, but look at how we can better connect with them, with the residents who need them, need them most. We seem to have challenges with getting information from the city in a way that suits the greater numbers in our community. And it seems like we always have to push to try to get information about funding that's available and what the resources are exactly. And so, I hope that, moving forward, there can be some improvement with that as it pertains to these programs, so that they are meeting the needs of the residents that need them most. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron, and thank you for everyone that provided public comment. And an extra thank you, City Clerk Heron, for making the print larger on the screen. Appreciate that. And thank you, Ms. Branlet, for bringing it up. So, at this time, bringing it back to the dais, wanted to check in with council members to see if there are any initial thoughts, concerns, or questions that you have on the community funding program. Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, I'm curious if we could get answers from staff on some of the questions that were just asked in public comment about, what does outreach currently look like? What does outreach look like? And how can folks find out about this opportunity currently?
Let me see if I have some notes on that. I do know that this last round, there was direction from city council to increase the marketing for the applications. It is done online through our website, through our weekly digest, which is released on Mondays. And then, they also did postcard distribution this year.
Excuse me, through the mayor, if I can just, as you may, as some of the council members know, but in terms of the, some of the public as well, we are down a staff member this evening, and Ms. Heron's helping pinch-hit this evening. So, there may be a team effort as we try to field some of these questions. Some of them are completely new. Some of them, we've received some heads-up on earlier today. So, in terms of outreach, Ms. Heron was correct in terms of what council directed and what was done for the last round, where we did see additional nonprofits applying for funding. I believe that what I was understanding from Ms. Croft is maybe more the individuals who may receive the benefits of some of the services that the nonprofits are providing. I think that's what I was sensing was more where the outreach might be needed, so that would be a different level of outreach. And so, that's, I would want to just try to clarify whether other council members interpreted that as Ms. Croft's comment or not. And then, it would be a matter of kind of what the role responsibility for the city is on that outreach, and what the role responsibility of the nonprofits who are receiving the money from the city. There might be a little bit of a shared effort there, that there may be a need to kind of increase the accountability of the nonprofits that are receiving the funding from the city, to make sure that they're doing their level of outreach, and then the city can supplement that. But I think there's multiple aspects of conducting successful outreach.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. Councilmember Dorr, did you have any additional questions about?
Actually, I do. I do have one more. So, in fiscal, this last fiscal year, the grants range from $1,000 up to $22,500. And I'm curious, is the same level of work required of city staff, no matter how much it is, to develop the grant agreement and the outreach and everything like that?
So, if I'm understanding correctly, is the same amount of staff resource used regardless of the amount of funding?
Yes. So, for each individual grant, this relatively similar amount. I did a question, but I have a guesstimate, too, of relatively the same amount of time and energy is spent, no matter the grant size?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Has the city staff, or has, in years prior on the council, has there ever been a thought of creating a range of grants, funding amounts, with a floor and a ceiling?
For past years, I'm not positive if there was, like, a floor to ceiling, more of the subcommittee having the option to change the amounts?
Let's see. Yeah. So, and again, in terms of piecing together the overall history versus the more recent history, if the question is more to do, would it assist in overall expectations to identify minimum and maximum grant amounts? I think yes, especially, I think this year, there was one relatively new applicant that asked for a pretty large amount. And so, it would probably just been easier to kind of set that expectation of what the typical, and maybe it could even just be within the framework of typical minimum and maximums and not make things absolute, because I know that there's an appreciation for some flexibility. But yeah, I could see benefits of setting and managing expectations would improve some, some of the process. In terms of a minimum, I would, I think it would be important to identify whether or not the, I think I've observed a practice where the city rarely says no to a request. So, if it's, if there is a desire to set a minimum, then there may need to be an understanding that the city may need to kind of say no in some instances. So, that's the only consideration I think there would need to be on setting a minimum.
I'd be curious, for other council members' thoughts about that. I'm curious, also, maybe one more question on the floor, amounts of, would it help, would it also help with staff time to have maybe a fewer number of grants? Because, I guess you could have fewer number of grants, you could have smaller grants to get to the same grant number. But would it help that the juice be worth the squeeze if grants were a little bit bigger, say between $2,000 and $5,000 as a minimum?
There could be various perspectives on that. I think at a certain level, the answer would be yes. Part of it, though, is whether or not, kind of getting someone off the ground and started with some amount to kind of show, show that they're headed in the right direction. So, that's totally a kind of a policy decision for the council. We can kind of implement that in different ways.
Thank you. And so, that's one of my questions, is if a floor and/or a ceiling would be helpful to help level expectations and also to ensure that the work that staff are putting into applications and getting grant agreements done, it's enough both for the reporting that the grantee has to do and for the work on the administrative side that the staff have to do. Wondering if it would make it easier, or at least more efficient. So, those are curiosities I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. And I think that would be more with a staff response on that one. I am comfortable having a minimum. Right now, I believe the minimum is $1,000, I believe. That's the least amount that we've given.
That could be our lowest amount given, but I wouldn't call it our minimum.
Okay. So, I'm definitely comfortable with setting a minimum. Just looking at, one of the pieces that I was looking at is actually, what's the overall budget for the organizations? I'm very interested in the grant program continuing. I just look at the social health determinants and who's disproportionately impacted. And I think taking this away would definitely have a negative impact. The big piece that I'm interested in is actually looking at who we give grants to, and then, it's used to pay for services of the city. So, that is probably the only concern that I have on this. Could you explain a little bit more when you're saying, paying for services for the city? Are you?
So, if the city, if it's a program, a city service, and there's a service provider that teaches pickleball, and then, they're using those funds to cover the cost for residents to use their services. Does that make sense? So, I have questions about the program. I do not have any solutions about them. One of my first questions is just, when I look, we gave out 40 grants last year, and as Councilmember Dorr pointed out, there's a very wide range from $1,000 to $22,500. And I really, to me, 40 grants seems like too many because of the amount of staff work that is required, and also, basically, the staff work for both the city and for the applicant itself. I think that it would make sense to have some more structure here. I understand that we, it's probably not the right time to be actually changing much of the program, but I think maybe just having some, some structure around the number of applicants, maybe the minimum amount. I actually think $1,000, maybe. It seems like that's a lot of work for the applicants and the city for $1,000, but I may be slightly out of touch with some of the smaller nonprofits that are really trying to start up. Maybe that is worth their effort. But it's, it seems like we have a wide range of nonprofits represented here, from some that actually are sort of an arm of the city, providing housing, providing mental services, mental health services, things to other organizations that, well, to other organizations. And I guess I am concerned about the amount of money that we spend at a time right now, when we are going to be going to the community and asking tax when we are going to be going to the community and asking taxpayers to support taxes. And I also recognize that these are nonprofits that are supporting our community members, are supporting the city. And so I'm not sure how to, how to balance that. And I'm, given that Vice Mayor Combs and Mayor Taylor have been the subcommittee, I'm very curious to see if, any suggestions that you have or experience.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. In the past, Vice Mayor Combs and I took direction from city staff. And I would say at least 90% of the time, we went along with the staff's recommendation.
Does the staff recommend the amount as well?
Yes.
Thank you. That's helpful. Vice Mayor Combs, did you want to add anything?
So I had, I have been on the subcommittee, I think since I began on, on council six years ago. And I do want to make sure we focus on, on specifically the problem we're trying to solve here. We are relooking at this program specifically because a council member suggested that it shouldn't exist for a number of reasons. And so it was less about like, you know, having certain grant ranges, less about sort of staff time, and more about that, like it just for a number of reasons seemed, again, maybe to lack the rigor that you might get in sort of traditional grant programs, and that there was not sort of a clear narrative or principle behind the organizations we gave grants to and specifically like sort of around the, the amounts. And so I do think that that's like the question, like should the city do this or not versus a kind of nibbling around the edges? Because I think the program is what it is. It's sort of aimed, it's, it's, it's not going to, I think, ever have the rigor that you might, certainly the rigor that's necessary to validate that these are organizations deserving of the funds that they're asking for, but maybe not have some of the rigor that you might see in a, you know, a sort of a grant funding situation that is, is provided by like a fund or charity that this is like what, what they do. This is something that is, you know, done as a side by the city and I think mainly aimed at, at targeting smaller organizations in the city who maybe are less aware of sort of the grant funding process. And so, again, if, if the desire is that this doesn't have the rigor that we might expect and, or want, and, you know, that the city doesn't have a, a clear reason for doing this, then yeah, I think we, the council can make a decision to not do it anymore. But, but I don't think, like I say, like making these small tweaks really fundamentally changes anything. If anything, I would actually be more interested in, in focusing on smaller grants and smaller organizations. And so, versus what I think some of the sentiment I've heard, which is like, can we be more efficient and provide, you know, larger grants to a smaller number of organizations? I see part of, in my experience on the subcommittee, and in this effort, has been about those smaller organizations in the city who may be new, who maybe don't know of any other sort of grant funding processes, or this is the first time they're going through something like this. And, and it's an initiative driven by residents and, and it ends up being a small grant of a thousand or 2,000. And so if you look at that from a dollar value perspective versus 20,000, it may seem as though like the impact is less. But when you say that this is a, a, a population that wouldn't get funding for any, from any other source, like, right? And this really allows them to sort of maybe fulfill some of their ambition, then again, like to me, the impact is, should be more on those, those smaller organizations or those smaller dollar figures. Whereas if I'm remembering correctly, those larger, the organizations that got 20,000, $22,000 were very large organizations that had operations in many cases throughout the county or region and were getting funding from, from other sources. And this was just one source. I think if you look at this program from its impact, like, right, within Menlo Park, I think, like if we were making some changes, it would be to focus on those smaller, those smaller organizations. Again, but then that goes against this idea of providing like more rigor because they don't have the infrastructure to provide, like whatever is some of what might be needed to allow the city to, you know, provide a more, more thorough review and have a more clear narrative of, of its aim, other than supporting small organizations in the city. So overall, those are like my, like my, my thoughts. I am supportive of the, the grant funding program continuing. But again, I can, I can understand the concerns of those that have been expressed earlier that, that, you know, maybe the city shouldn't be in this line of, you know, this line of work. And so, but that's, I think that's where I, but I would just say that like, again, I think that that's a decision to make, whether continue it or not, because I don't know that some of these, these suggestions really fundamentally change what, what was some of the concern that people had earlier when we discussed this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash? I'm sorry, Councilmember Dorr.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really grateful that this is on the agenda and that even though there might have been some things that were initially framed for why it was on the agenda, this is also a chance to look at updating it and reviewing it. I was surprised to see that our policies around the community funding program haven't been updated since 1996. And so it feels like a good time, almost 30 years later, to, to look at what we're doing and to think about, is this the right grant amount? Or the fundamental one you said first of, do we want to do this or not? I'm in the camp that yes, I want us to continue to give funding to our community organizations that are doing great work. And I want to update how we're doing it to make it better and more efficient for, for community organizations, as well as for the city and taking into account everything that's changed in the last 28 years. And so some things that I'm thinking about here are for those organizations that are, I would love to see us emphasize local, small organizations and, and for those small groups, instead of giving them a thousand dollar grant, create an opportunity to give them larger grants and encourage them to go after a little bit more funding to do their work. Because they have to do, I work with nonprofits as a, as a grant maker in my day job. The more paperwork with all these small little grants that you have to do, it can be quite cumbersome. And so if we can help cut out the burden for folks by offering a little bit larger grants to folks that are reaching out, so that might mean maybe we get a request for a thousand dollars and we say, hey, we are able to bump that up to two, would that help support you do even more of your work, for example? So something I would, some suggestions of what I would love to see is, yes, have us reduce the total number of grants that we're giving, maybe 20 to 30 grants in a year, given that that will help staff time, reduce staff time on this. Have a range of grants, ideally, it doesn't have to be hard, concrete, but say that we typically give grants between 5 and 15,000. And then I really appreciate Ms. Bramlett for your comment about the Finance and Audit Committee and the input and support that your team can also provide. And so I wonder, could, could the committee with support from staff do a little bit of the questioning that Mayor Taylor brought up of, is this city related? Like maybe Samaritan House might fall in that camp versus more community oriented? Is this a community-based local organization or a regional one? What local organizations are being missed? I wonder if some of that question asking could be done in partnership with the Finance and Audit Committee to then further help us ensure as we move forward that the, the range of grants we're giving and the, the size of the grants that we're giving, make sure that we're, we're focusing on the, some of the, the better opportunities.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr and Vice Mayor Combs. And for clarity, I'm, I'm looking at organizations where you have to, you pay for service. The majority of them you do not. Councilmember Nash, did you have anything to add? So I'm wondering, on attachment E, which is the Community Funding Program Funding Totals, where it says percent of agency budget, is that, I took as the percent of the agency that's the grant, the grantees' agency's budget? Is in general, there's two, there's three outliers that are 10% or above, but most of them are relatively, basically, most of them are less than 1%, or less than 1% of the budget.
Yes, I was just looking at our Assistant Administrative Services Director, and that is correct. That is the percentage of the agency's budget. And also, it looks like in the current policy, it's not listed as a max, but the limit that is in the policy is that the granted amount cannot be 20% more, or more than 20% of the applicant's total operating budget, which is why we have those listed out.
Thank you. And is there anything, I thought I had read something that there was, that there's some insight into how much the administrative costs of a organization is?
Yeah, and the current policies are Jared Hanson, Assistant Administrative Services Director, the current policy says that no less than 85% of the city funds must be used for direct services as opposed to administrative costs.
So I'm wondering, there is at least one organization that I'm familiar with that I believe about 50% of their money goes into administrative costs. So the way this is written, it could be that none of our city's funds go to the administrative cost, but if we continue this, I would like to see that written such that it would be of the organization's costs, unless there is some reason not to do that. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, to be clear, like as it relates to funding amount, like flexibility exists today in the current program. And again, I served on the subcommittee initially with former Councilmember Carlton, more recently with Mayor Taylor. And there were a number of instances where organizations asked for a thousand dollars and looking at the application and doing a review of, of the programs and benefits that they provide for the community, that those amounts were, were increased. And so, again, like I would only point out that flexibility exists in the current program to provide organizations with more than they requested, or at a higher, a higher amount just overall. I would also add, going back to, and again, what, like I do think that it's valid to review this program, but sort of going back to my recollection of what prompted this study session was, was not concerned about staff time. I don't know that like staff has complained or expressed that there were challenges to their time as it relates to processing these grant applications. If someone remembers differently, please let me know, because I could have missed it. But again, going back to like what problem or issue we're, we're solving here, but I don't remember staff's time as being like a major issue or, or concern. And so I wouldn't make that be the driving force of, of how I would look to make changes because the point hasn't been made that like an inordinate amount of staff's time has been focused on this, this program.
I'm curious, City Manager Murphy, in your comment a little bit earlier, you seemed to indicate that, I'm curious if you could speak more to the time required from staff to put together proposals and support on, on all grants, including these ones that are a thousand or $2,000?
Let's see, if I could maybe look to Ms. Heron on this one, and I can supplement from there.
Can you repeat the question? So sorry.
Yes, if you could speak a little bit more to the, the time investments from staff, because when I, when I asked about this before the city council meeting, it's indicated to me that yes, like this is, a good amount of time goes into this process.
Yes.
And I would just love to hear a little bit more about that and make sure that everyone can hear that too.
Yes, we did have an opportunity to check in with staff today about the staff resources that go into it. City Manager Justin, I can refer to Nicole's correspondence if that's appropriate. Okay, so it looks like, so for one staff, I can give a pretty detailed breakdown. For advertising, we're looking at 24 hours, for accepting applications, 20 hours. Reviewing of applications by the staff committee is 40 hours. Preparing for a subcommittee meeting is 24 hours. Preparing for a city council meeting is 24 hours. Preparing for, or preparing agreements is 24 hours. Preparing payments is 24 hours. Collecting fiscal year end reports, 20 hours. Reviewing fiscal year end reports, 40 hours. And then responding to any questions throughout the year, maybe 20 hours. So a total of 260 hours per one staff.
And how many staff in total are involved? I'm sure there are to differing levels.
Four to five.
Four to five staff.
Okay.
And so, just following up on that, it begs, is, is staff saying, is the staff taking a position at this moment that they spend too much time on this program? And that time would be better utilized other places?
I can start with that. Mayor, I wouldn't say the staff is saying it's spending too much time. I think it's a matter of, there are limitations on staff time. So staff time spent on this means staff time's not being spent on something else, but all of our staff work pretty hard.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy, for that clarification and Vice Mayor Combs for the question. So I think as a part of the study session, maybe one of the questions to come back with is what this program would look like at the minimum amount of staff time. I have no idea what that actually means, but if there could be a recommendation. So if the minimum, we're looking at 260 hours annually per person?
Correct.
Is that, go ahead, Councilmember Nash. Thank you. So that is five people at about even 200 hours each?
260 hours.
206, five people at 260 hours each?
Correct.
And again, if you can bear with us this evening, we're piecing some few things together, I don't necessarily believe that that's 260 times five. So that's like, there's definitely one key person who goes above and beyond the call of duty on, on the program. And then there's a, a group of other people involved, mainly through the review process. So there's a number of staff members that touch this. I'd say we have one person right now who's the main point of contact, who's going above and beyond the call of duty to be that point of contact. So it, step one would be good to confirm that the council wants to continue with the program. I'd say if we're going to continue with the program, which I'm, I'm sensing, I think there would be some potential retooling that is done related to staffing and the focus on the program going forward. And of course, we can do it in the most efficient way possible. But we need to, step one, confirm that the council wants to continue the program. And then if there's a desire to And then if there's a desire to do it in the most efficient way possible, that would be good to know, because there may be some refinements to the program to achieve that. And this is something that would probably occur over multiple years. This is not something that would occur instantaneously. We don't have the resources to retool that quickly.
Thank you. It was very helpful. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I think my recollection or understanding of staff engagement with regards to this effort is similar to what the city manager just shared. And in my conversations with staff, this was presented as a project in which they enjoyed working on and actually looked forward to, and was something that was outside of the scope of the normal work that they did throughout the year. And so, very much saw it as, as a benefit. And, but again, yeah, that there was one person who did, you know, a significant amount of work towards this effort, and other people who did significant amount of work also, but that was, that was, that was less than, than the person who contributed the most amount of time. But to the, the city manager's question or framing about, like, do we want to continue this or not? Like, I'm interested in continuing, but then I'm not necessarily interested in continuing. If then, this overarching sort of goal of, of like, well, what's the most efficient way to, to do this? Again, because I didn't understand, like, efficiency to be part of the problem we were attempting to solve. And so I will say, from my perspective, if that's how we're approaching it, then I would say that then my position would be the city should just get out of this, this business. Like, right? If, if all of a sudden it's like, well, how can you do it, like, sort of most efficiently? Then, then you are sort of reprioritizing the program away from what is its impact to the community, like, to then what consumes the last amount of, like, staff time? And if that's like how we're looking at it, then for me, it's best for, again, like a city, to just sort of step away and say that maybe this is something, given other priorities, is not something that the city does going forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash?
So I, well, bottom line is, well, I think it's very important to support nonprofits. And many, they do a tremendous amount of good. I think that the city should not be, at this time, in the business of this sort of grant funding, because I do not think we have the rigor to do it as well as, as I believe we should. And so, I would like to put it on hold rather than to, I would recommend putting it on a hold rather than actually doing anything more severe with it. But basically, just put it on hold until a time when we could actually put the energy into looking at the program, or until we can identify some partner that would be able to handle these, the smaller nonprofits that I think it is valuable to fund and put them, help them get on their feet. But I'm, I'm concerned that we're actually, that we do, that we are addressing community needs, that we are helping our residents, and that we are spending our money wisely, and are working wisely with our staff resources, which right now are very limited.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, I'm, I think this is a special program that we offer, that many cities don't offer, and I would be excited to see it continue. I think that, really, in what I'm saying, in limiting the number of grants, and kind of creating a standard range of grants, what I'm trying to do is, it's not the most efficient, right? It, but it's a system to give more clearer direction to potential grantees who are coming to us, and also to try to reduce some of the staff time and burden that's going into the grant administration, as well as the staff time and administration for grantees. It feels like a useful tool. I, I would hope that if and when this, if we can move this forward and continue this program, maybe there is more times that we say no to some folks. That's, that's part of what grant making requires. And I would like to see the Finest and Nautic Committee support us on seeing, you know, what percentage of these are more community-based versus regional, to see if we can ensure that the work is doing work locally, at least on the philanthropic side. One, one way that I've seen folks address this, wow, if you're giving a lot of money, you have to do all this due diligence, is by giving seed grants that are quite small, that maybe have less due diligence required from fiscal due diligence from staff time. And I wonder, I don't know the legal codes that dictate cities, but I wonder if you had a program that could give, you know, $500 seed grants to organizations, and it would be a very simple process for the staff to, to develop it, and it wouldn't have a lot of the required due diligence that these larger grants have. And there could be a lot more of them, because they're quite small, but they wouldn't require as much work. Is that another way that we could explore continuing community investing? But of course, that would require a lot more time and input than here. But I want to seed that idea for seed grants, because I, I wonder if it could be another creative solution for thinking about how to support really localized community efforts outside of the context of these, these larger grants that do require a lot more time from everyone's parts.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. And I am also interested in seeing the community grant funds continue. I will, because of staff resources being one of the concerns of council members, I'm interested in staff's thoughts around this. For me, that would be the deciding factor. And I know that question cannot be answered this evening. I go back to something I said earlier. These grants are, are important for the organizations. I'm mainly concerned about the smaller organizations, especially those that $5,000 is 50% of their budget. To me, that says a lot. That means that folks are out there working for free. They're not paying themselves for the work that they do. I'm, I'm always concerned about social health determinants and who is disproportionately impacted when it comes to education, or youth, climate impacts, employment, and accessibility. And something our city manager stated earlier regarding outreach, if and when this comes back, is looking at how the city can possibly supplement the outreach, but that the, the big lift would actually come from the organizations that provide this service. And as far as the, the grant ranges, ranges, I look to staff to, to give their recommendations about that. It does make sense to do less as far as the number, as 40 is a large number. I'm not in the philanthropy world, I wish I was. But I understand now why it takes so long for, for organizations, foundations that give money to actually give the money, because they go through the same challenges. And that role is definitely not in the wheelhouse of the city. However, to me, the personal touch that the staff puts on this program is the reason why it's been so successful. So I would not be in support of it going into someone else's hands to do that, because then we're paying for a service, again. And that is my feedback. And just to check in with staff to see if there's anything else that you need from the council on this item.
I would look to Vice Mayor, I believe, the C M was raised.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I would also be curious to see what direction staff is, is, is getting from this. I actually just wanted to share that I actually like Councilmember Dorr's idea of sort of seed funding. And to me, I, something like that is the best use of a program like this. But appreciate that to actually have a kind of substantive pivot like that. There's just not the, the resources to really, to really get there. I actually, again, like I said, I've been on the committee since joining council, and, and, and think it has historically provided a lot of, a lot of value. But I don't, again, I don't know that the sort of changes being suggested really go to solving any, any, like, sort of real issues with the program. And probably, just from my perspective, creates additional sort of churn or thrash for, for staff. So as, as I've sort of sat through this discussion, I think I would probably be most aligned with Councilmember Nash, that it might make sense to put this on hold until we really have the resources and time to think about what, what we want to do with this program. Because, again, I think some of the direction here, it's just not sort of like, not clear to me what, what's, what's changing, and what's the actual value add to these changes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash?
So I really appreciate this discussion. One more piece of data that I just want to enter into the conversation is, of the 40 organizations that received community funding, 33, 33 of the 40 received 2% or less of their budget from this funding. So we are not, what we're doing is impactful, it is good. It is great to be supporting these organizations, but it is a small percentage of their budget, as is intended.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Is there any other feedback from council on this?
So through the mayor, I think we probably do need a little bit more specific feedback this evening. And it kind of, I'll say, kind of comes down to maybe a framing of whether or not to place the program on, on hold for X amount of time, whether that's, you know, six months or something like that. Or frankly, it's, or, or release the call for requests, same as last year. I think anything other than that, like, if there's a desire for change with next year or something like that, that, that's, that's workable. So it's, I think the, the the feedback that we would need from the council this evening, and I know that you're, we're at four council members, not five council members, but whether or not to place the program on hold, and I'll just say for six months, until like, frankly, like, next spring, next year's budget cycle, or release the call for applications, same as last year. I'd say, like, the one thing that we could do this year versus last year is just be cognizant of some of these issues that were raised this evening. Maybe pose an open-ended question to some of the applicants, like, what changes to the program? Would you like to see things like that? We could kind of have an opportunity for that. But I think as of this evening, we pretty much need to know whether we place the program on hold, and I'll just say arbitrarily for six months, or whether we release the call for applications, same as last year. So I think that's kind of the, I'll say, the binary, open to a third alternative. I'm not trying to, to limit it, but I'm also trying to simplify down to something that potentially, we can get clear feedback from the council this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy and Councilmember Dorr. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Sure, I have a, one option is to continue it. I wonder if a small addendum inside what's already going out of, of saying, like, do we want a cap on the, on the size? Because I know last year, someone applied for $150,000 or something, so saying, what is our, our general ceiling to let people know, so they have clear expectations? Having an ongoing conversation with city staff and with the, the committee that's reviewing them to kind of, it seems like that could be an ongoing conversation about the number of grants that are actually done. I think what would be helpful to, to get alignment on is, do we feel comfortable saying no to some grantees? And that we will have to develop a process for not just saying yes to everyone and giving them something, but maybe saying no to some folks? That seems like something that would need to be figured out now. But those, that's the only change I would, I would suggest on a current program, is setting in a general expectation of the, the upper limit of a grant. And maybe once we start getting in contact with folks, if they are asking for $1,000 or something, you could ask if, would more especially be supportive for your, for your organization?
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. And just as a reminder, I believe that two council members were support of putting it on hold, and two moving forward. So trying to meet in the middle, based on what City Manager Murphy has asked about being more specific. The, the release for the call of the grantees would be in October or September?
Marketing would begin August, September, so.
Thank you. I haven't, oh, Vice Mayor Combs, thank you.
No, I'm sorry, do you, I'll defer to you. Were you going to say something?
I'll wait for you.
I do, speaking of sort of a middle ground, I do think the, the city manager has offered a bit of a middle ground about this idea of, like, putting it on hold, but putting it on hold for, like, a specific period of time. And I actually, again, given that, like, like this discussion, and a desire to see some change with this program, and, but pushing up against the constraints of, of, like, how much change can be implemented for this next round? And also, understanding and knowing that next year, we'll, we'll have two new council members, that maybe that provides a good opportunity at some point early next year to put this on hold until then, to then revisit it and get some input from those council members as to, like, their thoughts on, and again, now we're also only operating with four folks tonight, to have, like, those new council members weigh in, and hopefully we'll have five. And, and really sort of, at that point, like, you know, make a determination about whether this, this continues. If so, like, what are the tweaks and changes that, that are, that are like a priority?
I'm supportive of that, and I appreciate that, that highlight, especially if this means that we can change when the grant cycle is, because I can imagine having to do all the extra grant outreach and work for staff, city staff at the end of the year, as well as for grantees, when they're trying to do their end-of-year reporting. So when the grants, in our, the current cycle, when those are done, can be challenging. And so, I would be, I am supportive of that change, then, if we can also then, if the city can move up the timeline for when that would happen. So it wouldn't be until next fall, if the program continues, it would be in the spring or summer.
I'm supportive of that. And I believe that the city would send out an email to the organizations to let them know what the, what decision has been made.
Yes, so if there, if the council's coming to a consensus this evening about a delay for, we'd be six months or so, yes, we would notify all of the current recipients of that delay right now, so that they, they can kind of factor that in.
Okay, I'm supportive of that.
Could we also, is that a moment when we could ask people for feedback, too, on any improvements they'd like to see the grant program directly?
Yeah, I think we could, we'll see how sophisticated we'll be, and we could totally create an open-ended version. We'll see if we could also create something that provides some specific questions as well. Yeah, I think we could, could do that as well.
Thank you. So at this time.
Yes, I think we've now received the, the direction that we need for this evening, and thanks for working through it.
You're welcome. And at this time at the council, we can take a ten-minute recess, stretch our legs. Thank you.
All right. Having our city council back at our virtual and in-person days, Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. And our next item on the agenda is our study session. Our last study session, item M2, which is to update city-hosted community events and observances. Here to introduce the item is our Library and Community Services Director, Sean Reinhardt, Library and Community Services Manager, Natalia Jones, and Senior Program Assistant, Jen Mosso.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. In light of the lateness of the hour, we'll try to be brief with the presentation. I'll kick it off. This is a study session with an update seeking direction on city-hosted events. Here we just have a photo from the Halloween parade and carnival in a, in a recent year. Just to kind of set the tone. The focus of the study session tonight is really on the larger-scale recurring annual events that the city puts on. These have like a citywide audience, their widely celebrated holidays in many cases, or their big civic observances, or have local traditions. Just want to note that the city also organizes many, many, many other smaller scale, like one-off events and programs all year long. Those are not the focus of the study session tonight, it's really the big ones. We do have some recommendations for the city council, primarily around just providing direction to the staff about the city's event program in the coming year. Some of the main policy considerations are around the, the schedule, which is part of the staff report, around the costs which are included in the staff report, as well as the staff time. The city's role in hosting events, based on holidays of religious origin, which is a, a conversation that's been going on for some time in some past meetings as well. The role of community partners in hosting events, and any other feedback or direction that may be desired. And then with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Mosso. Jen joined the team earlier this year and as a senior program assistant, and her focus is on the community events. Get away, Jen.
Thank you. As you can see by this next slide here, we do have a full calendar of community events that are offered year-round. And we'll be diving into some details on those in the next slide, please. We'll start off with our summer and fall events. We have the Juneteenth celebration that's co-led with the Belle Haven community organizations, where we have local vendors, entertainment, some activities, and food vendors. We just held our Fourth of July parade and festival. There was a people parade around Burgess Park with family swim at the city pools, providing entertainment, activities, and food, again, all at the Burgess campus, and we had about fifteen hundred people here this year. We're also hosting the Summer Concert Series. We have nine total between Fremont and Kelly Parks. We see about two to three hundred community members each week with our last one being tomorrow night. So we hope we'll see you there at Fremont Park. And then coming up, we've got our Halloween Parade and Carnival, which will have a people parade down Santa Cruz Avenue to Fremont Park with our Merchant Trick or Treat, which is a precursor to the holiday season, and our shop local effort. We're going to move on to our year-end events on the next slide. We have Light Up the Season, where we ring in the holiday season and our shop local initiatives, featuring entertainment, winter lights, and hot cocoa. Here is one area where your direction is sought, whether to continue to wrap the trees or to instead pursue a winter walk of lights with ground-level featured lights. We also host Photos with Santa, which is family-friendly photo opportunities and a light breakfast. This year, we're proposing holding it at the new BHCC campus and then alternating locations back and forth between BHCC and the Burgess Campus. Here again, your direction is sought on whether to proceed with the Photos with Santa event as described on Saturday, December fourteenth. Looking a bit further ahead at our spring events, we have Black Liberation Month Celebration. It's a day of education and cultural remembrance and celebration in addition to a youth poster exhibition. This year will be hosted our first time at the Bell Haven Community Campus. We have the Youth Poetry Voices that's hosted by the library, where we showcase Menlo Park youth literacy and have a poetry reading here at city council, where they receive a commemorative booklet as well. And lastly, historically, we've held an Egg Hunt and Spring Festival, which is a treasure hunt for eggs, along with a festival and photo with Bunny. Again, we are seeking your input on whether to proceed with a city-organized Egg Hunt event as described on Sunday, April nineteenth in 2025.
And here's another picture from one of our events earlier this year. And so, event sponsorships and partnerships. On March twenty-seventh, the Parks and Recreation Commission recommended updates to the event sponsorship policy. And there is a draft of that policy that's available in the hyperlink. That's an attachment D, so you can look at that. The policy sets criteria for evaluating potential event sponsors. There's also information about roles and responsibilities, cost sharing, some support, goals for community events. And staff is prepared to bring the recommended event sponsorship policy back to city council for action on consent on August twenty-seventh. And then here is just a cost summary of all of the events that we held in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. We do have the Fourth of July as part of these events, just because it was so early in the fiscal year. But you'll see all of the events that we held over the year, the costs without staff, the estimated level of staff time, as well as the estimated attendance of those that participated. You see, the total cost was about two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for the twenty-three, twenty-four year of all of our larger community events.
Great. And that brings us to the last slide, just kind of wrapping up those four key areas that came up during the presentation. And of course, any other feedback or direction that council may wish to provide. Really primarily focusing on those questions around the Light Up the Season event related to the lights themselves, Photos with Santa, whether or not to proceed with that event as described, the Egg Hunt and Spring Festival, whether or not to proceed with that event as described. And any feedback that there may be about the event sponsorship policy. Just one thing, as a reminder, staff is planning to bring that back to the council on consent in a couple of weeks. I also want to note that in the published agenda packet, there were some reproduced pages, which was attachment E of the event sponsorship policy from 2015. But in fact, attachment D, which is a hyperlink to the March twenty-seven Parks and Recreation Commission report, they had made some recommended changes to it. So I'm just kind of make a note that it's the hyperlink attachment D that has the more current sort of recommended changes that the Parks and Recreation Commission provided to council. And I think with that, we've reached the end of the presentation and we're looking forward to hearing your questions and feedback.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you actually put the hyperlink D on the screen?
Yes, it'll just take us a moment, but we will do that.
Thank you. And are there any clarifying questions from city council members before we take public comment? City Clerk Heron, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on study session item M two, update on city hosted community events and observances. If you're in chambers, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. Currently have one hand raised, so this will be the final call for public comment on item M two. Okay, so our speaker will be Jenny Michelle.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the public, staff, I'm Jenny Michelle, longtime Renton resident in D three, mom of... Fifth grader, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, sorry. Personal comments. I am a native to the area. I grew up here and was raised as Christian. Christianity has a Christian nationalist problem right now, which I denounce. Folks are looking to erase the separation of church and state, which is something that we need to be mindful of. As a municipality, it's in our best interest to move away from activities that are associated with Christianity or any particular religion specifically. And I support the creative and inclusion ideas like the Light Walk, the Spring Celebration, et cetera, that have been proposed. I would even like to have an annual Onetta Harris Appreciation Day, where we have music, kids' games, connecting with neighbors. City Council services vendors are offered and we learn about her incredible legacy. The forward-looking goal is communicating that our celebration tent can encompass all folks, even those of us experiencing poverty or having mental health challenges or are in grieving. Like right now, my love and thoughts and prayers go out to the Scrupo family. Dylan was amazing. It's... And then back to the subject matter, it is expensive to hang the lights on the trees. And let's use those funds in other ways to celebrate one another wherever we are at. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. That does conclude our hands and cards. Mayor Taylor, for clarification, you were looking to have the recreation policy from attachment D displayed, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Fabulous.
I'm not sure if it's just one page.
I think I should be able to get both on. Might be small, but they'll both be there.
Pardon, through the mirror, if I may. Madam Clerk, I believe what was requested is the event sponsorship policy, which I think is a little later in that particular agenda packet.
And it's recreation scholarship?
No, it's event sponsorship.
Thank you.
They're in the same staff report.
Fabulous. Seven.
Thank you.
There's another page.
Did any council members have questions on the sponsorship policy? Councilmember Nash?
So it's more of a comment than a question. And that's for the sponsorship tiers, rather than just looking at attendance, I would recommend looking also at the staff resourcing that's required. Looking at the estimated staff time effort.
Another curiosity I have are how the different tiers were selected. For some, there are sizable increases between silver and gold, for example, and definitely between gold and platinum for two of them, but for others, it's much smaller. And I'm curious, so for example, for here, pricing tier two, gold is seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty, and platinum is only two hundred and fifty more to a thousand. But for others, it's a much bigger increase from five thousand to seven point five, so it's increasing two point five thousand. And so I suppose I'm curious about... Am I... I might also be looking at an old outdated. I'm looking at page M two point one three. Am I looking at the right page? Because it is also, I'm realizing it's different from the, what's on the screen.
Yes, and if I may, I think there was a little mix-up as far as in the publication of the packet. So you may be looking at the reproduced pages, which are from the 2015 city council initial kind of formation of the policy. And so the, which is still actually in effect technically. What's being recommended are some tweaks that I think the city clerk had shown on the screen. It was included in the packet, but only as a hyperlink as opposed to reproduced.
Thank you, and I take back my question. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs, did you have any questions about the policy?
My only question is that we are not, or it's not the plan of staff to base any decision about whether an event occurs or will occur. As, like, no decision about whether an event will occur is going to be based on the presence of sponsors or not, correct?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the question. I don't believe the policy addresses that explicitly. We'd have to go back and take another look, but the intent is not to have the sponsorship have that kind of bearing at all.
Thank you. At this time, I do not have any questions about the sponsorship policy. So I want to go back to, and I believe one of the slides that you had up that showed the city-sponsored events and the cost summary. So I think the tree lighting installation for this year is combined on the list that you showed us in your presentation.
Yes.
Correct. Just in the interest of having the slides be somewhat legible in presentation format, the two tree lightings are combined, shown combined there. I think the staff report has a little bit more detail and shows the two separate and distinct. We can pull up those numbers real quick.
Are there any ideas on the attendance for the tree lighting?
So thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I'll just go back to the first question on page M dash two point seven of the packet. There's a little bit more detail than is shown on the chart on the screen, but the same chart. So the tree lighting installation at Fremont Park, that cost was forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. And the tree lighting installation at Willow Road and New Bridge Street is twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And then the other question related to attendance, the Light Up the Season event, which is when, the one at Fremont Park, when there's, you know, an invitation for a crowd to gather and witness it, approximately one thousand, one hundred attendees in 2023.
And so for the second installation for Willow and New Bridge, are there any numbers on that one as well?
Thank you for the question. I'm not aware that there was like a public event where folks were invited to witness the lighting or have a ceremony around it. So we don't really have a way to kind of enumerate like an attendance.
And with the, I believe that you had a second option to the tree lighting is having a walk of lights, I think is what you referred to it as in this, in your presentation.
Yeah, that was a possibility of like a winter walk of lights, where the grounds would be lit up and there would be areas in the parks that people can walk and just view and take photos as opposed to the tree being lit.
And what's the cost for the walk of lights?
Significantly lower. We can't get those exact numbers. We've been reaching out to several vendors in the area to come up with what that would...
And then with having the walk of lights, is that something that would be permanent for the season or is it just temporary for the event?
It would be temporary for the season.
Thank you.
And something I'd like to clarify, the reason why that, part of the reason why that was suggested is because the current tree is unhealthy and...
That is correct.
Can't, can't have the current... And I'm curious, is the tree lighting, is the wrapping of the trees contributing to that decrease in health? And so I'm curious, if we were to do this on a different tree, would this cause potential damage to that tree? That's a, yeah, I know Public Works maybe better comment.
Well, I believe the deputy city manager, Nikki Nagaya, is making her way forward. I did want to comment that the wrapping of the tree is a little bit separate from the declining health of the tree, but it doesn't, doesn't help if the tree's in poor health. But go ahead.
Thank you, Nikki Nagaya, deputy city manager. And so we've been lighting the Douglas fir tree in Fremont Park for about eight years now. And over that time, it has been slowly declining in health. And so as we were preparing for last winter's event, noted that the branches in particular weren't going to sustain the weight of the lights and we were concerned about the health of the tree. And so we took a different approach in how we lit the tree last year. So instead of wrapping each individual branches, each of the individual branches with string lights, we wrapped the trunk and then gently placed the lights on the branches that extended. We didn't hear a lot of feedback about the change in the approach to lighting, so that was, was great. We also had a couple of A-frame signs at the event explaining about the health of the tree and some of the concerns that we had with its health as we proceed with planning for this year's event as well. We also have options that we could light other trees in the park. It may not be a Douglas fir, which is a traditional kind of evergreen species that has the look of the holiday season, but we could light an oak tree, we could bring in a tree. There are lots of different options if you'd like to pursue those as well, as well as the winter walk of lights clearly is an option to proceed.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
I would like to see the Douglas fir's health be our top priority.
Absolutely. And yeah, as you know... And yeah, as you know, we're a Tree City USA, we've been recognized for our tree protections, and so we, we do want to stand by and, and protect the tree as, as best we can.
The reason why I say that is my understanding is that lighting that tree is still on the table, and I just would like to, I'm concerned about that.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I mean, since we, we brought up the tree, I'd only add that, you know, there are multiple ways to light the tree, and, and you certainly make sense to which the tree's health is a concern, can light it in a way that's more delicate, like you can not wrap lights at all around the branches, and you can actually sort of string them down from the top of the tree. And so you don't really have this, the same amount of impacts to the tree. And so, and I don't know that that's something that staff has explored, but a, around town, there are a number of examples of people with trees on, you know, their own private property, that they light them by like stringing them down like vertically from the top of the tree, which as you can imagine is, is a lot more of a sensitive approach to lighting the tree. So I would just throw that out there since it came up, that, that it's not just one option of, of lighting that particular tree.
I'd just like to clarify, is that the approach that the staff actually took last year? It sounded similar.
Not, not exactly, but over the course of the eight years, we have taken different approaches in lighting, and I, I think what Vice Mayor Combs described has been done before, earlier in the, the eight years of history, where you kind of start at the top and then string the lights down. What we did last year was wrap the trunk with, with lights very densely, and then just place strings of lights out on the branches as opposed to stringing them down from, from the top. Sure.
A comment and a, a noticing here, it was, I really appreciate this, this report, and the area that I'm more, most interested in focusing on is not on a specific event, but looking at the overall amount of staff time and financial resources spent on activities. And it was really surprising to see five thousand two hundred hours being spent on things. And of course, these community celebrations and events are a really important part of our, our city and a space where residents can come together and celebrate being a community, and that's all very important. And also, I know that we are having to think a little bit more about fastening our belts as we look at different financial measures that the city has to take to secure its financial sustainability. And so I'm thinking both about finances, but also about staff time and that we have a, a quite a sizable occupant occupancy rate, or that's not the right term, vacancy, vacancy rate of, with city, with the city staff. And so thinking about, are there, are there changes that we can make that would lighten the load as well as address some of the cost concerns? And I don't have specific, necessarily specific events, but I'm, I'm just curious if there is a line of inquiry there that would be helpful to explore.
Yes, thank you for that comment, just, just briefly. There, there may be some ways to approach events with a more efficiency in mind, if that's kind of the overall direction that we received this evening, we can kind of take that direction and, and see some various ways to implement it, maybe reducing staff time in some areas in a way that doesn't really take away from the overall impact or, or benefit of the events. So that there might be some, some efficiencies that can be gained. For, for example, in the current year, the Fourth of July Parade and Festival, rather than being a parade all the way down Santa Cruz Avenue, which involved, you know, more like street closures and more coordination with the police department, it was moved to Burgess Park this year. So there was a little bit less of a staff time and logistics around like that element of the event, and there may be some room in some other events to do some, some tweaks like that.
So the fifty two hundred hours also really jumped out at me, and I would actually go beyond seeing efficiency. I think we need to do some cuts because I think that is almost three people, and that is, given our current staffing and the vacancy rate, I think that, that is excessive given our current environment. Perhaps we can move back to it later, but right now that strikes me as excessive.
And just as an example of, of Councilmember Nash's comment, looking at the tree lighting and then the Light of the Season, the total cost is sixty three thousand eight hundred for that one event. If you look at the tree light installation and then Light of the Season, because it's back, I believe it's all one day, the one day event. So that item, I, I would definitely like to see some cost savings and what, what that would look like. I don't know if it's the, what is it, the Walk of Lights? If we, or I should say if you all, change how the tree lighting installation, what that would look like? I'm not sure.
Thank you for that. On the, on the tree lighting specifically, the costs are shown there. The, there are two trees that have kind of traditionally been lit, and that, that total cost just for the lights is about seventy thousand dollars. If we were to pivot to more like the Winter Walk of Lights, maybe just at Fremont Park, we're pretty certain we could bring that number down a, a fair amount. So that, that's one, that kind of opportunity area right there.
Councilmember Nash?
As we get into this conversation, I just want to applaud what staff has done, especially since COVID. The events have just been spectacular, and this is not at all a reflection on that. In fact, it's been wonderful, it's really brought the community together and been a wonderful way to come out of COVID, but given our budget at this point is what we're really focused on. But thank you for the outstanding events.
Thank you, and totally understood.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so I would, you know, remind us that as far as sort of staff resourcing and, you know, the, the budget and amount spent on events, we are, we're not seeing everything. So I think the extent to which we were going to make some determination that there should be budget cuts and that we should look for them in the area of a community event, then we would have to have a full picture, which we don't have now. So I, I, I think to like sort of frame the discussion there is, is, is not the full discussion. Again, there are other events that are not here, as far as like save, I think, was it Save the Earth event, which the city is a sponsor, which a decent amount of city resources go towards each year, right? Not, not represented here, like, right? And so before we can make any determination about like that, events is the place where we feel that we need to cut. And again, this is not, not a new stance, then I, I just, that has come from the council before, then I feel that like, again, like it's important that we have like a full, a full picture. Because I honestly, as someone who like has continuously fought for these events, fought for them to come back after COVID, when there was, I'll be very frank, little support from council, whether it was the Summer Concert Series, was there, it was the gymnastics program, whether it was the Halloween Hoopla, again, these things that are really important to the community that it's, I think the council has seen historically limited value in, and of which, following the, the pandemic, a number of other community, like almost every other community more fully brought back their community events and programming of this nature before Menlo Park, and Menlo Park had to be sort of dragged. And I mean, at the council level, to really sort of see the value of bringing back these events. And, and then again, to sort of, sort of say that like, oh, now this is where we're going to look for cost savings, like irrespective of a lot of other programs that the council has prioritized. I, I think, to me, it's, it's, it, it sort of, again, like I said, it doesn't paint the full picture of what's, what's happening here. So if we are going to look to community events to cut, then let's, let's look at all of the, the events, but then also then let's look at like all of the things across that the city does. And make, make those determinations of like, that this is someplace that we're going to, to cut. I, I, again, like I, I, over the course of, like the past years, there's a number of times I won't call out very specifically, although I certainly can, where there have been each council person has had something that is a priority for them, that they have advocated for, whether it's a specific, you know, position being created, that have had certain, obviously, costs to the city. And so then let's go back and bring out all those decisions too. Like, right, let's, let's not just isolate and have this discussion, and I think like sort of falsely frame it as being like, oh, we're gonna, you know, we need to make budget cuts, and so the community events become an easy place to do it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Door?
Yeah, one of the events, so one of the things I'm looking at here too are where, where time resources are just, how they're distributed across a year. And something I'm noticing is that, so in the summer, there's back-to-back concert series every week, staff are being asked to support and be present for these. And also another back-to-back session is from the Light of the Season time and the Photos of Santa just two weeks afterwards in the holiday season. And I'm wondering about what, these are the, the major large events the city is participating in and helping lead. What are those two time periods, for example? Because these are the ones that I see most clearly have the closest state ranges. What kind of impact does that have on staff morale, staff capacity, other things that you might be working on for the libraries and other parks and rec things? I'm just curious if you could share a little bit more for us about those time periods.
Thank you. So actually, the planning for, excuse me, events such as the, the weekly concert series or the Light of the Season and Photos with Santa takes place prior to those events happening. And so it's, it's not the back-to-back, there was a back-to-back event each week, the planning will take place many months in advance, and so that it is spread apart, so that it's not your spending all this time on one event and then the next event and the next event each week. We make sure that we plan all year round for those events. Does that answer? Yeah, okay.
Thank you for providing the, the information for city council and going back to what Vice Mayor Combs just brought up as far as, excuse me, all of the services that the city provides with the small-scale programs that are routinely hosted at the senior center, library, childcare centers, and other city divisions, that is already programmed into the service. So is it automatic, or is it something additional that staff is planning for?
The former is really most accurate. It's really something that's baked into the programming for those divisions for the most part.
Thank you. And I am actually happy at the services that the city provides and at the level it's currently providing. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on community events that the city hosts more broadly for the public, but then also the ones that are specific to the programs that the city provides the service for. And for me, I'm just thinking about, and I'll use the tree lighting, the safety and the health of the tree is, to me, is priority, and that would be up to staff to say that this tree is no longer healthy enough to continue to serve this purpose. And here's, here's option two. So that's something that I look to staff to recommend. If my follow-up with the city manager at any point where there's something that the city is providing that's too burdensome, I'm positive that the city manager would share that with us. And so, so at any rate, there is an area for me that does want to see some kind of efficiency, but what that efficiency looks like, I would look at staff to make those recommendations, kind of the same as the health of the tree. I'd look to staff to make that recommendation. I appreciate this, this item being on the agenda. I'm not interested in cutting things, and I'm doing my best not to add anything because I would love to add a concert, because they're well-attended and the residents in Menlo Park really appreciate it. So that's kind of where I stand overall on the community events. So I will try not to add anything. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Taylor. To be clear, yeah, I'm, I'm, so if we go through regarding the direction that staff has asked for, like I am supportive of the Photos with Santa continuing. I am supportive of the city resuming its role as the lead organizer for the annual egg hunt. And I'll be frank, it was not clear to me why or what was the process by which the city deferred to the Firefighters Association this most recent year in allowing them to organize it, and instead the city doing, I, I don't, like a spring, some spring event, which based on the numbers provided here was not as well-attended as the egg hunt. But again, this was a scenario where I didn't, I didn't know, like what was the problem we were solving for, I know I've said that a number of times, this issue, this, this evening, as, as it relates to like that, that programming. So I would, again, for me, my direction would be the city revert back to being the primary organizer of, of the, the egg hunt. I don't, the list isn't in front of me, so I, I can't remember what I'm missing. In, in terms of the, the Light of the Season event, I'll, I'll be frank, a lighted sort of sidewalk seems somewhat underwhelming to me as, as a, a sort of winter event. And so if there was a decision made that no lighting of the tree in Fremont that has been traditionally lit makes sense because of the, the health of the tree, I would say let's, can we look to bring in another tree to, to, to light up? Obviously, it would be much smaller, but nonetheless, I, I think that that would comport with what people are expecting for an event of this nature and would be aligned with what a number of other communities, even the White House does every, every year. But yeah, I think some, some light the sidewalk to me seemed really, would be really underwhelming, and, and I think would not provide an as enjoyable experience for, for residents. And so that, that would be my, my, my direction as it relates to the, the actual lighting of, of something for, for as part of, of the Light of the Season events. I think I've already spoken on the, the Santa, again, I'm, the Photos with Santa, I'm supportive of that continuing and supportive of the, the, the switching between Burgess and Belhaven each year, and I've already provided comments on, on, on that kind.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Door?
Yes, I, on Light of the Season, I would trust city staff to come back with a thoughtful proposal, and I know that they wouldn't just light the sidewalks, they would make it interactive, you know, I, I'm sure they could get, you know, fun figurines or something, and I would trust the city staff to, as they have done for all the city events, to make them really engaging and fun. And so I'm excited to see what that proposal is, that's not tree-based, given the, the issues with the current tree, and making sure that that is continued, not just in Fremont Park, but also making sure that there's but also making sure that there's still something going on in Kelly Park. I like that there was parity or an attempt at creating parity across our city of of access to a celebratory space. Photos with Santa doesn't make as much sense to me. It's uh, I I would rather see us spread the love of staff attention, time and resources to events throughout the year, rather than in just a short back to back period, all in December. Um, and would like us to see, I'd I'd like to see that funding, that time uh, spent on either a a different event at a different time of year, more concerts, something else, or have that staff time and funding invested back into uh, the events that we are doing throughout the year um, to make them even better. I think that would be a a proposal that I would be really excited for. On egg hunts and and spring festivals, very happy continuing that. And on the event sponsorship, I I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Door. Councilmember Nash?
So um, I agree that um, light up the season should be, um, the current tree should not be lit, whether it's another tree in the park um, or however you do that. Um, and I like the idea of it being all season long. Um, so I don't, however that's done. Um, photos with Santa, I agree with Councilmember Door that that is something that I think, um, given that it's a high it's a high uh, estimated staff time and it's a low number of people who can do it, um, who actually participate um, because of the slots available. I would be um, in favor of um, abandoning that one at this point. If we do continue with it, I'd like to see the signups um, be reserved for residents and maybe just the last week or so it's open to non-residents. Um, if that's something that's not too, um, if that's doable. But I'd really like to focus these as much as we can on residents, um, with obviously inviting other communities to join us. Um, the egg hunt, spring festival, I um, basically, the other um, events I s- would like to see staff come up with a proposal. Um, it sounds like there's not unanimous or not, um, I may be in the minority here, but I still believe that fifty-two hundred hours of staff time in this budget environment is um, not a good use of our resources. And while there are other places we could look, um, I don't think we, I I think this is one place to start. But I would look to staff as to how to, how to go about that. Thank you.
Thank you for the reup there. And I I would say on the egg hunt, if there's a way to get bigger sponsorship or find another way to do that um, in deeper partnership, like like happened with Menlo Fire last year, that is something that I would be very supportive of as well, given the considerations of staff time uh, and resources there.
Although I think that there was a concern that last, just that it's definitely a city event, if it's um, thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, as as someone who um, attended uh, like um, has attended the the icon for a number of years, um, I I think that there is uh, a strong value add to the city being involved. And and I think that the event um, suffered a bit from the city's lack of involvement. And so I I wouldn't be supportive of this idea, again, of making um, the continuation of these events based on uh, the involvement of other organizations um, or or like the the sponsorship. Um, so again, again, like I I think we we went down this road. Um, and and I I think ultimately it it um, uh, resulted in, again, like I said, not as well run as when the city was involved. Um, and again, it wasn't clear what the city was trying to accomplish, what it's sort of counter spring festival programming. Um, exactly, so if if the thinking is is that the city shouldn't do this, and I think that like, then the direction should be the city shouldn't do this. But I I think to like, sort of um, go down a path that we've already seen r- results in um, a not as well run and organized event. Um, uh, y- 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 you know, does it make sense, again, like I said, to go down that 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 path of which we already know what what the outcome was is is. And then and again, it's not clear to me exactly what what get it, what gets accomplished by going down that that path.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs and Councilmember Nash and Councilmember Door for your um, direction on this item. I I am supportive of the light up the season with the suggestion of looking at another tree that stays lit. Um, I think makes a lot of sense. Um, and then also I, in the effort to be inclusive, I'm comfortable keeping the photos with Santa. Um, I think we might be two two on this one. I don't know what we, what your direction was on Santa, remember yours, but. You're with Betsy, okay. As, go ahead.
I just want to state, it's actually, um, in my mind, it's um, more of a resource issue than an inclusive inclusivity issue.
So it's a resource issue.
Same, it's it's about the resourcing and the timing of the year.
Okay, resourcing and timing of the year, okay. Um, I'm I'm in support of the egg hunt, the city taking the lead on this. Um, and then also I I did not have any feedback other than what council members shared with as far as the event sponsorship policy. And I see Vice Mayor Combs has his hand up.
I I think I um, forgot what I was gonna say. Uh, um, so um, we, again, I I would only say that like, I I think there there's clearly been some uh, contingent, I I think on on the council when and certainly uh, w- within the city, I go, I think it's very small, who has saw some great value or some great pro- progression um, in like the city not having these events, like not investing in them. And I I think there's like, you you know, multiple examples of that. And so I I I I'll be frank that the the resourcing issue sort of lands or that argument lands a little hollow with me. Um, and that it is a desire that like, the city not not do these events. And you can certainly have that 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 opinion. Um, but I think I think it's, y- you know, it's important that we be transparent and and clear about like, that reasoning. Um, because with everything, there's always like a resourcing element. There's always a need to prioritize. And so when you make a decision that like, this is not something you want to do, it's you you know, it's really not a resourcing issue, but it's it's you making a sort of substantive decision that that's not a priority for the city or that's something that the city shouldn't do. And and so I do think it's it's important that we, and again, I don't know where, it it seems on some of the stuff, we may be two two. But again, it it's 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 clear that there has been some voices that that says that the city shouldn't do this. And um, again, that it's disappointing for me to hear um, as someone who attends um, all of these events on a regular basis and has seen the great value add it provides to the community. Um, and that like others in leadership don't don't see that is is disappointing. But but again, y- you know, these are, we we're here to make decisions and and make priorities for for the city. And and I, again, like I say, I'll just reiterate that it rings hollow when it says, when the argument is like, well, it's it's a resourcing issue. When again, like I say, we're we're not looking at everything that the city does here. This is a very isolated discussion that we're having, like right, about one particular thing that the city does. And so again, if we wanted to really have an issue, a discussion about city resourcing, then that would be much more wide ranging discussion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash?
I would, in responding to what you were saying, um, to be very specific, we are going out to the voters in November to ask them to with the tax measure because we are having budgets constraints, you know this. And so that is specifically why right now this is a resourcing issue to me. I would love to say yes to all of this and more. Let's have an event all the time. We can't do that. Um, and I know you're not saying have it all the time, but it would be great to have all these events. I think that they do add to the community. I do attend many of them and um, it's it's terrific. I don't think we can do everything right now. I think we need to focus our resources on um, areas in the city that are city services that are um, not discretionary. Things that people cannot go to other cities to do permitting. Um, but their community development or things like that, to me, are where we really need to focus resources. These are the um, city events are things which are excellent, they add to the quality of life of residents. They are things which I think everybody appreciates. Um, but they are also things which when budgets get tight, I think that we do need to, it's a place where we can um, tighten up. I think that there are other places in our budget where we can too. I don't disagree with you on that. Um, but I think that it's not possible to take a look at all of the areas that we are spending discretionary money right now. Um, as they come up, I think we definitely should look at them. Um, and this is the one right now, you look very puzzled, so I'm curious to hear what you would, your response.
Well, um, yeah, I I appreciate the acknowledgement that, yeah, we we we're not looking at um, all discretionary spending or spending across the city. And this this is like an isolated event, uh, or this is a very isolated um, dis- discussion based on concern, based on like substantive concerns that a council member had that the city should not be involved in these these um, these events should not be holding them because they thought they were exclusionary. So a council member said that these events were exclusionary. And that's in, that's exactly why we're having the study session. And then to have the study session and then to say, well, what's really the issue is is that we don't have the resources. What's really the issue is is that we have budget constraints. When the entire framing, the entire reason we've had this discussion is because a council member said that they, these events were exclusionary. It really, again, rings hollow that we're not being true to what this discussion is about. I also, let's not forget, at the end of the day, as a small community, Menlo Park is one of the m- m- most affluent communities in this area. And to say that like, well, we shouldn't have things like a tree lighting or we shouldn't have things like an egg hunt because people can go do them in other cities. You can go and do that in another city, which has prioritized community of the building events, which has prioritizing things for their residents. And so our our residents, what we're telling our residents, oh, you can go do this in another city. So go do it in another city. We don't see the value in having these community events. I think that 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 overall argument, I have to be honest, is really problematic.
Thank you, and I have a a question. And I believe that um, our senior program assistant kicked off the conversation um, and included this piece around promoting um, businesses shop local as a part of, and I can't remember what the event was, so if you could remind me.
Oh, that was in regards to our events downtown, but in particular, the Halloween hoopla, the parade that will be going uh, down Santa Cruz Avenue. Just it exposes the businesses to all the families and community members that are participating in the parade and in the event, um, inviting them to go in and out of each vendor as they hand out candy uh, to the community. So we felt like that was a good way to kind of kick off the shop local holiday season as well, um, downtown.
And just thinking about the theme about shopping local, and I see the events that the city hosts as the same opportunities, um, because the stores are there. I know that the focus isn't there, but we still have opportunities when we're downtown, when there's an event to buy, to shop, um, to stay. Um, and also in other areas of Menlo Park that have um, places where you can do the the same. And I know that there is a disagreement um, on council now regarding the expense, um, the time that's spent from staff, the number of events we that we do. Um, I believe that in order to get folks to shop local, there has to be something there that interests them and sometime that isn't the store, particularly it's the activity. So I see them going hand in hand. Um, I am, I'm supportive of community events. Um, I enjoy them myself and I enjoy hearing with residents feedback are. And I think there's a value in the city hosting events. And just going back, and I know I already said this about what I do support. Um, and I'm not sure, now this is where I turn to our city manager, um, if there is one of the items on the direction requested where there is a two two. Um, I know that we can't sit on this item the rest of the evening, so I'm just trying to figure out how to get over that hump.
Let's see, so um, trying to bring it to the specifics of the items listed here. The the one that I'm hearing them, are are we, when you're saying two two uh, specific to the photos with Santa?
Yes.
Let's see, so um, so you're asking uh, for a suggestion of how, how for how for you all to work together to to come to a sol- solution? Let's see. Let's see, uh, just a minute. Let's see, so, I mean, w- w- one way, it it could it could come back to a a future council meeting when there's five council members. It could be that there's a default of when, you know, something's two two that then like the um, the existing practice remains, so that's another option. If it's um, there's a bit of, um, I'd heard from one council member, Nash, that was trying to like, uh, if we do do it, that we approach it by really trying to emphasize the residents versus non-residents and aspects like that. So um, I I'd want to kind of see like if there's a uh, if there's some interest of continuing it this year with some level of of refinement that was workable, what without to kind of Vice Mayor Combs' point of like, if if there's a desire not to do it, then don't do it type of thing. Um, just being uh, direct about that. So I I'd probably want to see if there was some potential refinements to the event. Um, that could still maintain the the um, positive aspects of the event. And so maybe it's that kind of emphasizing the Menlo Park residents' participation.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy, and I'm supportive of the making sure, and I'm not sure how staff will do this, just making sure that Menlo Park residents are prioritized with the photos with Santa.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm um, I would, I'm looking to staff overall, just um, from a resourcing perspective. I, any of the events, I don't have any particular thing against the photos with Santa or any of the events. It seems like that was something where there's a little a small attendance with a large uh, high level of resourcing. But I really would look to staff to come up with a suggestion as to, you know, if there's anything to be cut, what it would be, or just scaled back.
Um, thank you for that, uh, mayor and and council. Uh, I think um, like on photos with Santa and in general, I think what we're hearing is is a direction to really keep an eye on efficiency, seize those opportunities. Um, probably continue like the traditional events as presented here. I think we heard that overall, I'm focusing on the um, the tree in particular and trying to find a solution there that best emulates kind of the 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 lit tree experience while preserving the health of the tree. And again, kind of back to opportunities for um, really uh, like kind of reducing like staff time and cost wherever we can find those opportunities, and I do think we can.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs.
Um, yeah, a a couple of things. One, um, as it relates to like having lights around a tree. One, um, as it relates to like, having lights around a tree like all year long, I, I, I wonder is, is that not also something that, um, could be like damaging to a tree's health? Just, just seeing since we're, we're having this, this concern about like, you know, trees and, and their health. But I do appreciate, um, that at least staff is, um, uh, as, as taking out some directions, some understanding that like, an option should be something that replicates or, um, you know, hews to some degree closely to a lighting the tree type experience and not exclusively about like, sort of, like I said, like having some, some lights on, on the ground on a sidewalk. I would also point out that like, as it relates to the framing of this discussion around sort of staff resourcing and staff capacity, and maybe this was in the staff report and I miss it, but it's not clear that this has been framed up to me as, as, you, you know, well, we do this and then other stuff doesn't happen, like right? That there is this trade-off. I've not understood as we have, you know, we have a staff and, um, that, you know, organizes community events. And so these are the things that they do. Like, we, we, we have a new addition to, to that team who was introduced tonight. So again, it, it seems like this, 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 this option that is being sort of put, put up seems a little false to me, because again, like I, again, I haven't understood like what's, what's, what's the trade-off or what, what's, what's not happening, um, uh, because these events are, are, are being planned. And in fact, we hire staff for the very specific reason of planning these events. Um, and this is what, what they're, what, what they're doing. And so, again, just, just my, my thoughts on like why this discussion and its framing has somewhat perplexed me. And that like, I think that there has been an unwillingness to have what is the real discussion. And, and again, it's a desire for, for the city not to do these events. But there's just seemingly the unwillingness to come out and, and just say that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. And the, the councilmember that brought this up is actually not here, um, which is why, as far as the, the framing, which is why it's not here. Not sure if that helps, um, it helps at all. But just wanted to do a check-in since we've been on this item for about an hour now, if the staff need any additional direction is, did, do you need any clarification on anything that the city council has shared?
No, other than to acknowledge and thank all of the, the councilmembers for the, the really helpful discussion. I do think we have enough direction, uh, to proceed and, and we'll reach, reach back out to the city council if we need some additional, uh, feedback or direction.
Thank you. We are moving on to item N, which is our informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. At this time, City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items, N1, city council agenda topics, N2, short-term rental compliance update, or N3, progress report on implementing the 2030 climate action plan. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. And this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items N1 through N3. Seeing, looks like one hand. I believe this was Jaden, and if you didn't let us know which item you were speaking on.
Yeah, yeah, if I could comment really quickly on the 2030 climate action plan, uh, uh, informational, I guess. I don't have a specific agenda that I'm trying to push, but I just wanna say that I appreciate the city of Menlo Park, um, doing its best to promote sustainability efforts. I hope that, um, the next time around, it does update the climate action plan. Um, I'm hoping that it'll continue to, uh, see, you know, kind of get the greatest reach, in terms of reducing greenhouse gases, um, continuing to commit to these goals that it set out, both at the state level, you know, kind of maintaining alignment with that and also for itself as a city. So really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you for the public comment. Are there any discussion on the informational items from city councilmembers? Councilmember Dorr?
A quick comment on N3, on the progress report on the 2030 climate action plan. I'm so grateful that this is here and I'm glad that we're doing, uh, review of our climate action plan every, every so often. And I love coming back to the really strong and ambitious climate action plan strategies that are outlined, that the city outlined, uh, years ago and, and kind of set a north star for where we need to go of, of reaching carbon neutrality by 2030 and, you know, living into that. And especially number one, electrifying ninety-five percent of existing buildings by 2030. I appreciate the long list of activities that have been done. And I know still that we have a long, long way to go to actually reach that goal of ninety-five percent. And so, um, would encourage folks who are invested in the city to take a look at the climate action plan and, um, uh, consider how, how to get engaged with helping us achieve this fantastic plan that requires a lot of work, um, over the next six years and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. The next item on our agenda is item O, which is our city manager's report. And here to introduce this item is City Manager Justin Murphy.
Great, thank you, mayor. I don't have any, uh, specific updates for this evening.
Thank you. The next item is P, our city councilmember reports. Are there any city councilmember reports since our July ninth city council meeting? Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, I'm sharing, uh, an update that city staff made on, um, on the public website that I wanna make sure is also noted in the city council minutes, so folks can refer to this later on. And that's on, um, regards to housing on Sharon Park. I know that there had once been a rec, an idea shared at a housing commission by one commissioner about considering housing on the park. And it sparked big conversations and concern about could housing be put on Sharon Park? And was grateful that staff spent time, city attorney, um, as well as the city manager to review all available documents to come to a conclusion once and for all about if that is a, a real risk for the park. And, um, the answer is now live on the housing element update webpage of the city website. Underneath frequently asked questions, uh, the question is, can Sharon Park be used for housing? And the answer that was shared here is, uh, essentially not without all, uh, not without a, uh, special election or, uh, so a special election and at, at-large decision made by the full city of Menlo Park on this. Or, um, there could be minor changes if an adjacent piece of, small piece of portion of park land that's same size contiguous land adjacent to the park were replaced out to switch a small portion. And it refers here to, um, I'll just read it because I wanna have all that written in the minutes, that Sharon Park does not appear to have been dedicated as a public park or purchased by the city or county as a park. And because of this, government code section three eight four four zero, et cetera, um, would govern. Therefore, Sharon Park could only be abandoned or converted to a different use following a special election or an exchange change of a minor portion of the park for the same sized contiguous land adjacent to the park. And to clarify in the record, city attorney, um, could you confirm that that means that the city council or, uh, a housing commission couldn't come and say, we want to make this housing? And then it would go through that this would require a special election or the exchange mentioned previously?
Based, based on the records that I have reviewed, that's correct. But I only have records that were in the city's possession.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And if there are no other report outs from city councilmembers, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.